Hundred or so mailed ballots that we sent out back. The new ballot drop boxes being well-used and, you know, we are emptying it a couple of different times a day. It does fill up quickly and people are definitely utilizing that, I'd say even more than the U.S. Mail.
Clerk Stats, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry to disrupt you. I did announce that we're being recorded by NOR Kim, but Mr. Healy wants us to give permission to record. So as far as the members are, are the members all set with, are all the members accepting, can we let him record, which we normally do? Mr. O'Leary, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Mr. Studo? Yes, Mr. Wallner? Yes, Mrs. Gonzalez? Yes. Phil, it's okay to record us, we thought you were doing that anyway. Madam Clerk, can you rewind and start from the beginning so Phil can capture all of that as well?
All right. As I said, you know, we're well into the election period right now. We've mailed out over 4,600 ballots and are, they are coming back fast and furiously. So we are in, of course, week one of early voting and we started on Saturday. We had four hours on Saturday and Sunday as well. And we were open for early voting from 8:30 to 3:30 today. And in total, we've had 575 early voters at this point. So we're right now trying to formulate a plan for election day voting at the church to make sure that we follow proper procedures and safety protocols under COVID conditions to make sure that the safety of all the voters and workers is recognized. So I'm working closely with the police department on that and we will have a plan in place. We actually do have procedures in place and we will get those out to the public shortly.
All right. Any questions? No. Mr. O'Leary?
I had a couple of residents indicate to me that there was an individual standing by the drop-off ballot box, arms crossed, you know, observing the activity right, very close proximity to it. Has there been any requests by any candidates or political party for official observers either inside or outside the polling place?
During early voting, Mr. O'Leary?
Correct.
No, there has not.
Have you been made aware that there were people standing by the drop-off ballot box outside town hall?
Not at all. No one had mentioned anything to us or I don't believe they mentioned anything to the early voting workers or I'm sure they would have related to me.
Yeah, this was outside, standing by the drop-off box. So again, I didn't know, a couple of residents indicated their discomfort with it and I didn't know if how.
Were they, were they dropping off their ballots at that time?
Yes, they were dropping off their ballots.
Is that what they were doing? Yeah, yeah.
Dropping off their ballot, you know, outside town hall.
Well, they didn't, they didn't come in or contact me to make me aware of it, you know, or we would have tried to monitor that a little bit. I don't know, I don't know the instance, Mr. O'Leary. Was it over the weekend or?
Yes, yeah, I believe it was maybe it's Saturday.
Maybe, you know, I don't know, with all of the news media focusing on ballot drop boxes, maybe they were trying to look to make sure it was secure. I'm not sure.
This was, this was, you know, there was no, it wasn't news media, it was.
No, I'm just saying a resident might have been, had heightened awareness because of news media and was just looking at our box to see if they utilized it perhaps, would it be secure? I wish they hadn't spoken to me.
What would the protocol be as far as someone standing by the drop-off box? Is there any?
We have, nothing that I'm aware of that would prevent people. It would be just like them standing in front of town hall unless they were with a campaign and they were trying to intimidate voters, we would need to know that.
Right.
The registrars have a policy in place for early voting that prevents electioneering within 25 feet of any entrance where, as I'm sure you are aware, at the polls, it's 150 feet. We can't go that far, but we did make a regulation for 25 feet, but that would be for electioneering. I'm not sure what these, this person was doing.
No, they weren't either, other than standing there with arms crossed, somewhat intimidating individual, that's all. I just wanted to make you aware if you weren't aware.
No, I wasn't.
And you may want to ask the police officers of the police department if they were made aware.
If you could reach out to the person that made you aware and have them contact me, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, okay, I'll see if they're willing to do that.
Thank you.
It's great.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Is there a camera out there?
I'll let the town administrator speak to that.
There are, there are security cameras here at the town hall.
So we would be able to look back on that?
I'd have to look further, you know, at the, at the system, but if we had specific information about a date and time, it would be very helpful.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gilberto.
I will add that there were a number of us out front of the building during the business day on Friday, just evaluating the way things were functioning at that spot. I don't believe, I believe everybody who showed up to cast their ballot at that time was able to freely access it though. So I don't, it doesn't sound like this instance that's being cited was tied to that. It sounds like it was more a single individual.
Just, just, Madam Chair, so how many, Barbara, in relation to, you had mailed out 4,600 ballots and that's unbelievable, fantastic. What percentage have you received back? You said most of it's by drop-off as opposed to mail?
Yes, I would say, you know, most of it is definitely through the drop box. I couldn't give you a figure yet, I haven't run a report on that. We've been so busy processing them to get them online so that if people want to track their ballot, they can see it. So I don't have that figure in front of me right now.
And in relation to the ballots that are, that are dropped off and the ones that are early voting, how are those to be processed as far as, how are they going to be counted?
Well, we're looking at options, different options. For the primary, we handled all of that at the polling place. In lieu of checkout workers, we had our workers at those stations actually processing all of those ballots into the ballot box. The chapter 115 of the Acts of 2020 does give some options for clerk's offices in processing these and we're looking at all the options right now to make sure we can choose the one that will best suit the needs for North Reading and allow for smooth access at the polls and unfettered access to the ballot box.
So I guess I missed the, so the ones that are early voting?
Yeah.
Are those being counted, run through a machine already?
Not at this point. No ballot can be run through a machine, especially early voted ballots have to, a lot of people question that because they feel that it should just go into a machine, but the state law doesn't allow that. They have to be sealed in an affidavit envelope and then we just process them through the state computer system to acknowledge we've received it. That goes on the tracking platform of the Secretary of State's office and then they're all stored in the vault temporarily, of course, until either we initiate an advanced processing, process as allowed under the law or same-day election processing.
What's the option, what's the option in relation to early processing?
Well, that can start next week and it is, it has to be, of course, a lot of paperwork documenting the process. The ballots would be advanced removed from their affidavit envelope by a team and then they may or may not be advanced processed through a tabulator at that time without running any results. No results from any tabulator machine could be run until 8:00 PM November 3rd.
You haven't decided yet whether you're going to process early or not?
I'm, I am leaning that way, Mr. O'Leary. I'm getting teams in place right now and I want to get all of my information ready. We are constantly in touch with the Secretary of State's Office Elections Division to get the best updates we can and that decision, I have time to make that decision.
Just as a matter of information, my wife and I voted early Saturday and it, the process went very well and I appreciate the, the person at the tail end of the process licking the envelope for us and not literally licking it, but you know.
Yes, they had a sealer.
Yeah, the sealer.
Right. Normally at all previous early voting that's taken place, we had, except for September, we had sealers at every voting booth for the individuals to seal their own ballots. And then with COVID at the September primary, we couldn't do that because we would have to be sanitizing those handheld.
No, but I just wanted to state that it went very smoothly and very well. And for my wife and I, we were appreciative of the opportunity to avail ourselves of it, get our ballots in, get it done and we'll just wait for the results. But it went very well on Saturday for us and we appreciate it very much.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I think as we move on to the next agenda item, I think that has to do with your department as well.
Right.
So you're hanging in there for that.
I am.
Our next order of business is appointments, election workers, recycling committee, metropolitan area planning council. Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, the town clerk had submitted a listing of election workers for appointment to work at the upcoming election or ongoing election. She then submitted a revised listing today. There were, I believe, three individuals, Barbara, that opted not to be considered.
Yes, that's correct.
So if folks haven't seen it, there is an updated listing that's in there along with an updated motion. Menceno, hopefully you have access to that in the shared folder.
I have it.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Yes, we do. Madam Chair, I move to appoint additional election workers for the current appointment period in accordance with section 12 of chapter 115 of the Acts of 2020 as requested by the town clerk in a revised memo dated October 19, 2020.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
So just in relation to the number, Barbara, how many more are you adding on?
This is 24 and they're, they, I really didn't even solicit them. They actually started volunteering, I think, as soon as, I think there was an information in the red book distributed by the Secretary of State's office and of course, media just out there to say to, you know, people want to volunteer, they should reach out to their local elections division. And so these, all these people just came forward and I think the reason, you know, some of them dropped out now is because their schedules had changed. At the time that they requested to come on board, their work schedule may have been different than it is now and so, you know, they, they just are not able to do it now. And these, these people will be mostly used as, I'm going to call them monitors in directing voters to their correct precincts outside of the actual polling place. We're, as I said, we're working closely with the police department to make sure we have proper spacing and traffic flow within the foyer and the hall and we're counting on these new workers to help us with that, to just keep that going smoothly and safely.
In relation to the additional workflow that you've had to date and looking forward, how much additional personnel have you put on and what do you anticipate election day to look like?
Well, other than these 24 new, I'll call them volunteers, we had other newer election workers appointed already this year and we're utilizing, you know, everyone we can. And as far as, you know, I'm not anticipating actually the election day activity, it's certainly not going to be what it has been in past presidential years because of the openness of voting by mail this year. So with 4,600 and growing numbers of ballots having been mailed out, the opportunity for early voting for the full two-week period, including weekends, that will dramatically reduce the number of in-person voters on election day. There are always a number of people who apply for a mailed ballot and sometimes that's as a backup so that in case they weren't feeling well on election day or during the early voting period or in case there was a greater outbreak of the COVID that limited their ability to engage socially outdoors, they would have their mailed ballot. But as we've already seen right now, we have 90 people out of the 575 who have voted early had applied for a mailed-in ballot. So that's 90 mailed ballots that will not be returned because those voters voted in person. So we have a lot of crossover here, but certainly we, we will have not the heightened activity on election day of voters as we normally do, you know, for, you know, like four years ago or four years before that when we could have 80 to 85% of the voters turn out.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So I have a motion by Mr. Studo and I believe Mr. O'Leary seconded it, right? Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye. Thank you, thank you, Clerk Stats.
Thank you.
We have more appointments and motions. Mr. Studo?
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following name for appointment as members of the Recycling Committee for indefinite terms, Usha Pilai, I hope I said that right, I'm sorry if I didn't, Frank Falcone.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mrs. Gonzalez, two nominations and for Mr. Gilberto, how many positions are currently open? You're muted.
So I believe that the number of vacancies is three for the recycling committee at this point in time, but if I have that wrong, I would certainly stand to be corrected.
Thank you. And so we'll hear from Mrs. Gonzalez. You are liaison, Mrs. Gonzalez and did you, okay, can we hear you? Yes. I can see you, but I wasn't sure if you froze.
No, I'm not froze. I just, I'm not sure what, the motion was made, so.
So you're recommending that we appoint both of these nominated individuals?
I am recommending.
Okay, all right. So I have a motion by Mr. Studo, I have a second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
The term is, what are the terms, are they indefinite?
Indefinite.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I stand to be corrected. The number of vacancies is two according to the Board and Commission Information System on the town clerk website.
Oh, it's full?
I believe this would put it at a, at a full complement, yes. Whether all the members are active, I don't know, but according to the roster here, there are two vacancies, both for a, on no expiration term.
Okay. All right. So Mr. Studo, can you, can you state the names again for us? It'll be a roll call vote.
Usha Pilai and Frank Falcone.
All right. So we have a motion, second, no further discussion. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye for both.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye for both.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye for both.
Mr. Studo?
Aye for both.
And Manu Pelley is aye for both. We have our next order of business, which is Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Is there a motion, Mr. Studo?
Yes, there is. Madam Chair, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, chapter 40B, section 24, I move to appoint Town Planner Danielle McKnight as the Town of North Reading's representative to the Metropolitan Planning Council and Town Administrator Michael Gilberto as the alternate representative for three-year, for three-year terms to expire October 19, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seems like the logical choice, right? So seeing no further discussion, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye to both.
Okay, Mr. Wallner?
Aye to both.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye to both.
Mr. Studo?
Aye to both.
And Manu Pelley is aye to both. All right. Our next order of business is to sign the state presidential election warrant. Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, thank you through you to the board members. This is a vote that is required in order for the November 3rd state election to formally be called here in North Reading. As has been the case for previous warrants, we'll be asking to coordinate a date, hopefully this week, for the board members to all come in on the same day to sign the document in hard copy as is required so that the constable can then post it. And I believe the town clerk remained on the call for purposes of coordinating that date.
Yes, she is. All right. So I have, do I have a motion? Did we hear a motion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, well.
Not Ash. Let's hear a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to sign the November 3rd, 2020 state presidential election warrant.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye. So is there, is there a particular day we might be able to all go, to go sign?
Tomorrow is best for me, tomorrow morning for me, but I don't know about everybody else.
I can get in tomorrow.
I can get in tomorrow morning.
I can do it early.
Can, can we try for Thursday or Friday?
I could do.
I won't be here tomorrow, so.
I can do Friday.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that all right, Mr. O'Leary? I know you said not, Friday doesn't work for you.
Let's see. All right. Yeah, okay, morning, I'll be there morning.
Friday morning, that's fine, right, Mr. Gilberto, that works with the timeline, right?
I would ask the town clerk just to confirm that there's sufficient time for the warrant to be posted?
Yes, there would be. I'll have to notify the constable and maybe he can even pick it up Friday after everyone signs it.
Okay, so Friday morning, thank you for your accommodation. All right, so Friday we'll all sign and please, please send us a reminder. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next order of business is a COVID-19 update. Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, thank you. Very briefly, I'll just let the board members know we continue to monitor the case information on an ongoing basis in addition to the weekly public health report that's put out by the state on Wednesday evenings. Over the past couple of weeks, we've seen consecutive weeks of 14 new cases over the previous 14-day period. That has left us with a 6.0% positivity rating for, excuse me, 6.0% case load, which has kept us in the yellow designation over the course of the past two weeks. We have had a couple of instances of cases occurring in the, in the public schools. However, we have not had a case where there has been a, at to this point, any transmission associated with those cases in the public schools. It has been resulting quarantine requirements which have occurred in those schools for specific cohorts of specific classes or grade levels and that is being handled between the superintendent of schools, the health director, the public health nurse and the school nurses. I know that something that is very much on everybody's mind is the upcoming or ongoing Halloween, you know, activities and we've put information out on the town website relative to what are the sort of high, medium and low-risk activities. I know the question that, you know, has certainly been circulating out there is tied to traditional trick-or-treating and as I mentioned in our last update, you know, we are looking at trying to provide and incorporate the CDC and DPH guidance relative to how trick-or-treating could occur and barring any substantial change in the town's position relative to COVID-19 activity, our hope is that it would be able to continue, albeit altered by this guidance. And so there may be some detail coming out on that from multiple departments later this week, but as we've been saying all along, obviously the situation is, is fluid and the data changes on sometimes a daily basis, so we're going to need to continue to monitor it. But I know people are looking for some, some information, you know, the short answer is we are still, you know, looking to see trick-or-treating occur here in North Reading on Halloween, although with some modifications to it, the most notable one of which is really trying to avoid any of that person-to-person interaction in large groups, which can often go with the traditional trick-or-treating exercises. But there will be more to come on that at, at a point later on, potentially later this week.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Any questions?
The Board of Health is meeting tomorrow night.
Mr. O'Leary?
So the Board of Health is meeting tomorrow night and they'll be addressing some of the, some of those topics, I guess, they'll be discussing it. In addition to the increase in cases here is obviously concerning to, you know, the number of individuals that could be in certain types of business establishments, I think the Board of Health will be discussing that also with some remedial actions.
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Leary, I don't, I apologize for interrupting you. Mr. Gilberto, can you mute everybody because someone's connection is just, it's actually disrupting Mr. O'Leary's discussion here? And we can unmute you again.
As I says, the Board of Health will be meeting tomorrow night and going to be discussing a number of these issues, you know, at length. And I know the town administrator has been in lengthy discussions with the health agent, the public health nurse. And again, I want to acknowledge the public health nurse's code-red alert that went out last week, that was very helpful and informative. But again, people need to be aware that, you know, we're still in the midst of this thing and that if we don't do our part, you know, the Board of Health may be forced to take some additional actions in relation to curtailing activities within our business establishments even more than they're being curtailed now. So just be cognizant of it, you know, while we're all very anxious to, to get through this, we've got a long way to go still and we need to just do our part. So the Board of Health will be meeting again tomorrow night, I'll be participating in that discussion too. And as the town administrator said, there'll be more information forthcoming probably later this week.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Gonzalez?
There's 14 new cases reported. About a month ago, Mr. Gilberto, you said that they were putting probable cases in with the count. So are any of those probables in that 14 or are those all confirmed?
I, the short answer is I don't know offhand, Mrs. Gonzalez, and I'm not sure whether from a medical standpoint, we're being given the information to distinguish between the two. So I'd have to, I'd have to check with the public health nurse, but I don't, the short answer is I don't know offhand.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Studo.
Hi, this is a question, and actually to Mr. Gilberto and Mr. O'Leary, because you're the liaison, you may know. But when the, when the Board of Health makes a decision, any decision, do they base it on confirmed or probable? And I only ask because, you know, there, there are some decisions that may come down that affect, you know, people that, you know, we're all close to in this town very significantly. So I just wonder, is, is the, are we basing decisions on confirmed or probable? Like, I don't know if, if you guys know that. I haven't been part of any of the health meetings, so I don't know.
I mean, I can tell you that what, what I think is happening is that these confirmed cases are, are being presented to us. These probable cases are being presented to us as if they are confirmed. So again, I'm not sure that we have the ability to distinguish between the two. But what, what I can tell you is that, you know, from a, you know, a discussion and an operational standpoint, the discussions amongst the core COVID response team, including the two chiefs, the health director, superintendent of schools, and the public health nurse has been to, to understand where the transmission is occurring. And we certainly will make that information available to the Board of Health for, for its discussions. And, you know, how they choose to, you know, act with that, I think is something that is, you know, yet to be seen. They've had some initial discussion about potential restrictions, but it was really preliminary. You know, there may be more discussion, you know, tomorrow evening. I'm not sure whether much will have changed in the, in the eyes of the Board of Health members. I guess I would also add that, you know, when, when the public health nurse has commented upon, you know, where are we kind of seeing the general transmission is occurring in, in North Reading, the, the response has been, you know, individuals who are, you know, being exposed and becoming a positive case by virtue of their work. And then also the family, you know, household transmission as well. Those seem to be two, you know, primary drivers that we've been hearing, hearing about. But I don't want to prejudge the discussion of the Board of Health before they've had it, so it's hard for me to predict. But we will try to get at our regular meeting tomorrow morning, a better understanding. I will try to get a better understanding of, you know, do we even know that the presumed cases are in fact presumed when they're, or are they just being dumped, you know, not presented to us as confirmed? We'll try to get that answered.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilberto, is the Board of Health data coming from DPH?
Yes. So our caseload comes from the Mass Department of Public Health's Maven system, which is a database that public health nurses are able to access the data from. That's the sort of first point of information, and then there's this lag in information that comes through the state's reporting numbers. So there's yet to be a moment in time when those numbers have been the same throughout the eight months we've been going through this. And it's been at times a source of frustration, but we have been told that it is due to a lag in data from some of the testing sites. You know, it gets right into Maven, but it doesn't get to the state reporting information right away. There are isolated instances where we get alerted to a case that's not coming through Maven. So somebody calls the health department, calls the public health nurse, but they're not necessarily in Maven. But I can't think, I'm not aware of instances where the person who is a resident of North Reading has not ended, you know, up in that state reporting system within a day or so of that happening.
Are you aware of, because the DPH, the online dashboard is reporting confirmed cases and probable deaths resulting from confirmed cases, and then independently probable cases. Are you aware of the reported numbers being significantly different when you, from the numbers that our Board of Health has? In other words, is there some sort of a significant gap that would, that you could assume is because of probable cases versus what, what they have for confirmed cases on the dashboard?
There was a point where I, I thought that that was the explanation, but what I've been told is that the explanation of the lag, which has been at times 20 to 24 cases, depending upon the week, that, that it's actually associated with the reporting and not classification. But I've not heard that yet. That could be a great answer if it is the explanation. I just have not heard it yet.
Okay. Okay. And I think, Mr. Wallner, do you have any questions? You're all set. Okay, it is a, you know, definitely difficult time. It's a scary time for people. I just want to thank the school department, the superintendent, and all of the administration, because they're, they were right on top of alerting the parents about what's going on and trying to keep us informed and advised, because we have our kids there, we have our beloved teachers there, and all of the people in the school system. So we do want to take whatever containment measures there are to, to keep everybody safe. So we thank, thankfully, they are, they are people of plans and planning, so they were able to alert us right away. And we wish that anybody who is a confirmed case has a rapid recovery from the virus. All right, so we're going to move along to our next order of business, which is public comment. Right? I usually skip over that, Mr. Wallner, right? Mr. Wallner has to remind me to go back to it, so we have a lot of participants today. Let's see if there's any hands up. I don't intentionally skip over it.
You know, you've got a lot of things to do.
We have a lot of business. In addition to that business. All right, I don't see any hands raised. Mr. Gilberto, did you want to maybe unmute the, this one individual joining us by phone? I guess. I don't know if that individual wants to make any public comment. And I see no, nothing in the chat room, other than Mr. Healy's recording. We're good?
I'm going to briefly unmute all, Madam Chair, if that's okay, and.
No, that's okay. No, yeah.
Do you want me to unmute all for?
Well, can you unmute the individual joining us by phone? Because that would be the only person that can't raise their hand.
It might be Jane.
Oh, that is Jane. I'm sorry.
That was Jane's phone. Jane's phone. Someone else.
It's not, it's not Jane, no.
No, I have Jane. I've got Jane. Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask the person to unmute, because I can't physically unmute them myself.
All right. We'll just give the individual an opportunity, and I guess not.
I believe that that's Ms. Doherty.
I'm trying to be anonymous.
Well, we do have an anonymous joining us. All right. I'm sorry, Ms. Doherty. We just wanted to, we just wanted to make sure that whoever was joining us, appreciate it. All right, so we're going to move on to the next order of business, which is board member reports. Mr. O'Leary, take it away.
Just, again, my two busiest assignments right now are the water and wastewater, which you're going to be getting an update, the community and the board will be getting an update shortly as a, as an agenda item. And Board of Health, again, we just covered a significant amount of detail, and we'll have more to report at the next meeting. The only thing that I'd like to comment on again is that, as I indicated earlier, you know, my wife and I had voted this, this weekend, and I would encourage people who, again, don't want to necessarily wait until Election Day to take advantage of either the mail-in voting or the early voting procedures, the early voting hours. I've been posted on the website and are pretty readily available for anybody who wants to, including the weekends, to go down and participate. And, you know, for, if, 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 most people are like my wife and I, you know, it's been a very trying and frustrating and tense period of time up, up to this election. So it was actually a great relief to be able to go in, cast our ballot, and have it done. And I just wish that for everybody else and encourage everybody to go and participate. Because, you know, it's, this is our opportunity to, to have our say and determine, you know, what the future of this town, Commonwealth, and country is going to look like, you know, for the next four years. So I would encourage everybody to go down there and participate, and I think you'll find a great sense of relief in finally completing the task. So other than that, Madam Chair, I'll say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner? Muted. You're muted.
Thank you. I've been focused on the age-friendly initiative in town. And so if you are age 55 or older, you are one of the 5,000 in our town who are being asked how we can make North Reading a more age-friendly community. This survey was sent directly to your home and only takes 15 minutes to complete. We've already received 500 so far. Thank you. Our goal is to receive at least 1,000 more, so for everyone else, please fill out yours today before the deadline of Friday, October 30. We are also seeking the voices of adults who will become, or may already be, empty nesters, who are asking the emerging question, is there a life after kids in North Reading? These adults have developed a strong community connection through the schools, but may be wondering if North Reading can be a place where they can maintain these important social connections while still leading a life of purpose. If this is of interest to you, or anyone who aspires to live in North Reading for life, you are a Rising Senior. We want to hear your voice, regardless of your age. So please fill out the survey, and if you don't have a physical one, because you're under 55, you can, it's a Survey Monkey connection, and you can find that link on the town website, under the CIT, I believe is where it's located. Or if you're also interested in participating in a one-off Rising Senior focus session, you can just write me directly at rwallner@northreadingmass.gov, so I can get you involved. And the main message is, the best way to predict your future is to create it. This is your time to let us know how to do that. So please get involved, please fill out the surveys, and help us make a better community for all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wallner. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'm just, we'll be hearing from Mr. Greenberg on the recycling committee for a second reading of a policy that we are trying to take steps to get towards, and some grant funding. So looking forward to hearing that in a little bit.
Thanks, Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Studo.
I have very little. Just like Mr. O'Leary, I've been, I've been doing my best to catch up on the waste and water, and we're going to get an update, although I've been leaving it to him, because it is, it's a lot more complicated than, you know, the title. You'd think water would be simple, and it's probably one of the most complicated things I've ever been part of. So, yeah, I have nothing for this week.
All right. We're going to hear, I, I do see our team also joining us, so we're going to get a little bit of an update shortly. So I'm going to move into our next order of business, which was a 7:30, 7:30 meeting. Vote to sell town-owned land map, 78 Prossel, 1723 Riverside Drive, which we originally had scheduled and then continued, but we accidentally continued it to the wrong date. So then we had to republish to have the hearing this evening. Is that about right, Mr. Gilberto? All right. And I think we're joined by the petitioners. Are the petitioners with us here? Yes. Yes, sorry. Yes. Oops.
Madam Chair, you're correct. We are joined both by the original petitioners, Mr. and Mrs. Carrero, as well as, I see Kathy and Jerry there as well. Thank you for joining us, and I know you were on way back at 6:30, so thank you for staying on there. They also abut the, the property over on Riverside Drive as well.
Okay. And so we had a public hearing with regard to this, and I believe that we did the, anybody that wanted to speak on the petition portion, right? We've already done that. Do we, do you, do we need to do that again?
Madam Chair, we, there was an initial discussion that happened prior to the A&R plan being completed by Mr. and Mrs. Carrero and their surveyor. When we opened the hearing, I do not believe we had any public comment at the last meeting, so I don't know whether you want to hear from the petitioners or from the other neighbors.
Well, just for the, for purposes of the meeting, if the petitioners don't mind, you know, explaining it again. And, and there was a notice published too, correct, Mr. Gilberto?
That's correct.
Even though this has continued, should we be reading that into the record again anyway?
We probably should, but I don't have it here in front of me and have not put it in the packet. But for the record, it was published in the newspaper of record last Thursday. And there was also a very public vote to correct the continuance date prior to the date of the continuance, I think now four weeks ago. And I believe that the parties that are most likely to be interested are all well aware of the timeline and how we got to where we're at.
Right. And I believe we also looked at the, you had shown us the parcel map, the assessor's parcel map. I don't know if you want to call that up, but if, you know, this, why don't we? I know you've explained this to us before, but if the petitioner wouldn't mind just a few brief, you know, a brief comment on what you're doing with it, what you'd like to do with it. It's clearly adjacent to your parcel. And go ahead. You can take it away.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So a couple of years ago, we petitioned to acquire a parcel next to us from the town. We went to a few meetings, a few hearings, and it was recommended that we subdivide the lot so that the town could keep half for easement to the, to the river. So we went ahead and got it, a plot plan with kind of splits the lot in half. Excuse me. We're interested in, of course, expanding our driveway. Right now, we're right on the lot line. We also, you know, in the future, hope to, you know, maybe, you know, increase our setback for a garage. Our house is only 36 feet long. And, you know, if we ever had to move our septic tank, you know, we plan on being here for the rest of our lives. So this is, you know, not tomorrow. This is, you know, over the next 40 years or so. So we were hoping to acquire, you know, at least 30 feet or half of that lot to do what we want to do, you know, in the future. So, you know, it's been a couple of year process, and here we are. We'll see.
Thank you. And they, the petitioners have done everything that we've asked them to do to get it to this point. Mr., any questions, Mr. O'Leary?
No, I'm in, I'm in support of this. Again, the applicants committed clear cases to their need, you know, quite a while ago. The indication from the board at the time was, you know, favorable. We asked them to go to the planning commission to get it subdivided. They've done all that we requested them to do, and I think we should bring them the relief and offer it for sale to them.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner?
No.
Any questions, comments? All right. Mrs. Gonzalez, questions or comments? Mr. Studo?
No, everything was good.
Are there, is there anyone attending or joining the meeting that would like to speak in favor or against, I guess, this petition? If you would use the raise hand function. Oh, Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, so I would, just for the board's edification, we were aware of some questions from the abutting property owners, Susan and Jer, Susan and Carrie, excuse me, Kathy and Jerry, who are both on the call this evening. And I have to apologize, Kathy, I just, I never caught your last name, so I keep not saying it because I don't know it. But we went out to the site on Friday, and then we went out again on Monday this morning as well and met with the Carreros and with Kathy and Jerry to look at, at what we were looking to do and to try to sort of mark out on the ground, not to survey grade, but, you know, a general understanding of what we were looking to do. And I think that we identified, you know, fairly accurately where the midpoint of the town lot would be and what spot would be left to be town-owned. And we, there was a question, I think, previously about the location of the Carrero's driveway. Today's visit was able to confirm it does not trespass on town-owned land at this point in time. I know that was a concern that we had. And so I think the outcome was, from the conversation, and certainly Kathy and Jerry can speak to it themselves, but I think the outcome was that the board was being asked to sell Lot 17B. And I'll share my screen. It's the lot that would, that abuts the Carreros. Does everyone see a plan on there?
No.
And I believe that the consensus amongst all the neighbors who were involved in the discussion was to, that the town would retain Lot 17A. Now, I don't know if Kathy or Jerry want to add anything, or.
Well, to answer your question, my last name is Austin as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, so, so the, the lot, which was formerly ours, was subdivided. 17A contains 3,560 square feet, more or less. 17A contains 3,560 square feet, more or less. 17B contains 3,740 square feet, more or less, which is adjacent to the Carrero's parcel, which is the portion of our land that the Carreros would like to acquire. So the proportion that we would, the town would be retaining, we own it, it, it's not a question, it would be that 17A portion, which we, we're retaining to maintain access to the river. And when we did look at this some time ago, there are other access points that we do have also adjacent to other lots. Um, but this was sufficient, according to what we heard previously, for us to be able to access the lot, though I think what we heard previously was that topography didn't really, wasn't gonna be the easiest means of access, this, this particular area. So does that answer your questions, Mrs. Austin, Mr. and Mrs. Austin? And, or do you have any other questions?
I would just like to add to these, um, I believe there's a lot of, of, uh, inaccuracies in terms of who owns what, and we have not been provided enough information from the, from the committee here to permit us, uh, to, um, examine this ourselves and make sure that it is in fact consistent with all, uh, people involved in this. So other than that, uh, be no comments from, uh, our group for the time being, and you'll be notified later of our continued thought and greater depth. Any questions?
So this is a, a, a plan that's been prepared, I, we can't really see this, Mr. Gilberto, but this is a, a plan that's been prepared by a certified engineer, right? That's the seal at the bottom?
Correct.
Okay. And so...
And it's also been reviewed by the planning commission and signed off by them, correct?
Also correct. It's actually been recorded at the registry deeds as well.
Yep.
The same thing was true with the site plan or the newer plan, which has been, uh, I guess, a couple of weeks ago.
For 19, not for this.
That's correct.
I, I, Madam Chair, through you, I, I know that there was some question about some markings on the ground in the street that we were trying to, um, determine whether any of them were surveyors, and it turned out that it didn't appear that, that they were. Um, so we've explained to the property owners in the vicinity that, um, no, we're not, we weren't making any representations about where the survey grade line would be, nor were we able to make any representations about what use the land might have, because there are a number of environmental considerations going on with these parcels because of the riverfront buffer. But I, I do think that we, you know, everyone is aware that, you know, that, that, that those are issues that would need to be dealt with separately through the appropriate permitting, um, you know, for, uh, for any development that might look to take place on the parcels.
Well, that's all I've got for now. I'm sure there will be some more later on.
Okay. So just for the record then, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Austin, you are not, are you not in favor of the town voting to permit the Carreros to acquire a portion of the town's parcel?
Are you saying you don't want, you're against the town splitting the parcel for sale?
This is why we have to have time to review your inputs and look at this again and understand it. And we have not had that in a total investment today of about two hours. And it's just not enough.
Okay.
Mr. Gilberto, was there a public hearing on the planning commission's, uh, part in relation to the splitting up of a notification to a butters?
Going from memory, this was an A&R plan. Um, I, I don't believe that a hearing is required, but I do believe they submit a courtesy notice to a butters when they are doing that. Um, and I believe that occurred, um, sometime in April of this year. So it would have been virtually, but yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilberto, when did you walk the area?
Uh, so we walked the property on, um, Friday morning, and, um, it indicated that we were gonna take some rough understanding of some of the landmarks through our GIS coordinator, try to get a better understanding of where we thought the lot lines were on the ground with the understanding that we were not bringing a surveyor in to do that, because that's not something that the town was looking to get into representing one way or the other. And then we returned to the property this morning, um, just to try to lay out where we believed, um, the, the lines were, and the GIS coordinator felt that you had an understanding of between three to five-foot tolerance of where, where the lot lines are and where the, the midpoint, so to speak, that 30-foot frontage midpoint, um, was as well. And we wanted, really just to show everybody what was being considered to the best that we could. We don't normally do that for, um, any of these town-owned land type hearings. I mean, we may go out there and look at what's going on, but where this was a bit of a unique one, and we were trying to, um, accommodate the needs of the entire, of all the interested parties. Um, we did that this morning, just to confirm.
I figure, though, it's a little on the safe side. I've lived in, uh, Riverside Drive for over 20 years in this town, and I have many times, over and over, watched this process. It's extremely difficult one, because there's not a lot of really hard materials or that could lead you. And in fact, it's been basically improperly, um, I would, in a way in which it's been done now for, as I say, uh, 20, 20 years. So we have, uh, a lot of experiments. I myself am an engineer, I'm not a soil engineer, or anything like that. But just be aware, there are some serious difficulties to deal with in trying to manipulate this. And that's kind of where this left us. I didn't, we didn't think that there was anything that needed to be done at this point. Certainly, we would, if we thought there was unworked done, we would have fixed it up and made it fixed, so... I think that's, uh, all I better say.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things we, we're gonna have to do is seek, uh, guidance and so on from other persons involved to, uh, to haul them out of the closet, I guess. They thought they were put away for a while. Okay, anything else, any other questions, please?
If I, uh, if I may, again, we...
Thank you, thank you, Miss, Mr., Mr., Miss, Mr. and Mrs. Austin. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or against this petition? If you could use the, um, raise hand function in the chat? Or, I see none, Mr. Gilberto, I don't see anybody.
I do not see any raised hands.
All right. Okay, and to the Carreros, did you want to add anything with regard to your petition?
Uh, yes, please, Madam Chair. So moved here about four years ago. Um, my, my neighbors are wonderful, we, you know, we talk to them a lot. Uh, they do own, you know, approximately 400 feet of, of frontage, uh, approximately three lots. And, uh, we were afraid to have this land next to us purchased and, um, and developed like the rest of, um, the street. So, you know, two years ago, this, we started this process, and, you know, they've had plenty of opportunity, um, you know, for the past two years. So we just feel that we've reached that point, and hopefully, um, you know, this is, this is the outcome. And we've sent them letters and, you know, um...
Well, as I said, it's mentioned before, you are watching firsthand, up close, the 20 years. I don't know, are you, are you 20 years old? Anyway, um, so there's a lot more, uh, history, if you will. And it's just, it's a lot, we'll have to go over it all again. This already represents some, uh, past data points on some site designs and so on, of which a lot of people have metal, or not metal, but mounted that sort of stuff already. And it's all recorded in various... And, uh, okay. All right, anyway, we'll continue it at another date.
All right, okay, thank you. Thank you to the parties. Um, I'm gonna also, um, do we have a, do we have a motion, Mr. Studo? Oh, I'm, Mr., hold on a second, Mr. Gilberto?
No, I, it's, it's relative to the motion, we do have a motion, and it is on page eight of the packet. I would just clarify that the motion, when it's read, it's going, it, it's written to say map 78 parcel 17, Mr. Studo? And if you, once you have that in front of me, let me know.
Yep, I got it.
So that's the third line of the text of the motion, sorry, second line. It should read map 78 parcel 17B.
Okay, map 78, 17B, okay. And then if I see it correctly, it's, uh, 1, 2, and 4, correct, Mr. Gilberto?
Um, yes, you are correct, Mr. Studo.
Do you like the motion?
Sure. We, we have closed the comment portion of the hearing. So where's someone else to provide comment? Okay, so do I have a motion, Mr. Studo?
Yes, Madam Chair, I moved to sell by auction town-owned land designated as map 78 parcel 17B, located at 23 Riverside Drive in accordance with M. Masters General Law, Chapter 60, Section 77B, at a minimum bid price of 1,550, subject to the following restrictions. Parcel shall not be used in and of itself as a separate building lot in the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Section C pursuant to its ninth paragraph, if applicable, are waived to prohibit the use of this parcel as a separate building lot. Accessory structures of any kind shall not be erected or maintained on the parcel unless the parcel is combined with an adjoining parcel containing a primary structure. The parcel shall not be used to satisfy minimum zoning of health code for requirements for the construction or use of any additional dwelling unit on the parcel or in an adjoining parcel. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion of our members? And just from the chair, the, the engineer, the certified engineer, takes all the data from the meets and bounds from the deeds, all of the deeds of the parcels are deed, the abutters deed, the petitioner's deed. So it's, it's fairly precise, even if the engineer walks it and marks it. Those can change, of course, whoever, you know, might move them, those can change. But the recording of it on a plan is, is a pretty precise process that occurs, so... Um, and, and also, I think that in terms of what we typically do vote on these motions with these conditions, it's pretty clear, um, that whoever does acquire this through auction is not going to be allowed to, to build on it, including if this, if these petitioners are the successful bidder at auction, even if they combined it with their lot as the adjacent lot owner, they're not allowed to build a, a whole other parcel, piece of property, uh, you know, building upon it. So it's only sort of an accessory use to their parcel for what they, they represented, if they do acquire it, if they are the winning bidder, it's for a driveway and for maintaining it adjacent to their lot, uh, current lot. Um, so that's seeing no further discussion. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And Manu Pelli is aye. So, Mr. Gilberto, when does the parcel get put up for auction?
Madam Chair, through you, this parcel and a parcel that was previously approved for auction prior to the disruption of the COVID-19 pandemic will both go to auction, um, we believe, sometime in the next four weeks or so. So it'll, it'll be upcoming, and there will be, it will be a public auction, obviously, and as you know, it goes to the highest bidder. Um, but they will go, those two auctions will run concurrently, um, the other parcel being over off of Borough's Road.
So is the auction going to be like this on a virtual auction, or is it going to be in person?
Uh, it's likely to be virtual at this point, only because of the way things seem to be going with the restrictions, but we're gonna talk that through with, uh, tax title, um, council as well, to determine the best avenue, and we will make sure everyone is appropriately notified.
And where is this going to be, where are people gonna be notified about the auction?
It'll be notified, um, in the, uh, in the newspaper here, and the North Reading Transcript will also put the information on the town's website, um, to make folks aware.
Thank you. All right, okay, thank you for joining us for this. Our next order of business is a water and wastewater update, and we have multiple individuals here to, to, Mr. Clark, I saw Mr. Demming there. Um, so if we, Mr. Gilberto, can we jump right to our, to our team?
Right to Mr. Demming, please.
All right. Yes, Mr. Demming, I did see him.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, so I'd just like to get started with the, uh, an update on the wastewater. Um, we had a meeting last week, um, there was a representative from Wright Pierce, along with Mark Clark, John Clipfel, and myself. So we met with the North Andover DPW Director and the DPW Operations Manager. Uh, so the purpose of this meeting was to discuss potentially bringing sewer main down, uh, 125, uh, down 114 to connect to the Greater Lawrence Sewer District. Um, the first topic that we discussed was, um, sending a forced main directly from North Reading to Lawrence. Uh, one of the things that North Andover did bring up, um, was that the utilities are pretty crowded on 114. Um, so there would have to be, obviously, significant review before, before that could move, move anywhere. So, uh, Wright Pierce was, is going to be getting in touch with North Andover and getting their, uh, basically their files, so they can see exactly what's in the ground. Um, another topic that we discussed, if a forced main wasn't a, a possibility, is tying into their collection system, which, uh, off the top of their heads, they weren't sure if they could handle our capacity. Um, I think at the very least, without knowing the specifics of their infrastructure, we would, um, they would, there would definitely be some upgrades to their pump system and probably some pipes in the ground. So, uh, like I said, North Andover is sending the files, uh, to Wright Pierce to start the review on that. Um, Wright Pierce is also in the process of reaching out to Mast DOT as 125 and 114 are both state roads, so we would obviously need their approval. And there was another thing that North Andover brought up that was interesting, was, um, 114, I believe in the area from Merrimack College up to the supermarket, um, is in the process of getting approval to be reconstructed, uh, similar to what's going on, uh, on Route 28 in Reading. Uh, they're currently at 25% design for reconstruction. Uh, their plan right now is to put that project out to bid in late 2023. Um, so I think we all pretty much agree that, you know, it would be a long shot for us to, to get everything in line and get everything approved and be able to start breaking ground before that. So realistically, you know, if we're five to 10 years out, we're gonna be after the point of them reconstructing their road. Um, that right now is, is pretty much all we have on wastewater. Like I said, Wright Pierce is doing some work, speaking with, um, with North Andover's engineers and with Mast DOT.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Gilberto?
If I could just ask Mr. Demming for the background, for those who are not familiar, um, we were directed towards 125 and 114 in our discussions with Andover. Uh, could you just give us a little bit of that, or could someone give us a little bit of that background? Because I know some of us have been involved in discussions, but not everybody has.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, uh, how, when the last presentation was made, but the original, I believe the original plan before I had gotten involved with it was to go right up Route 28, um, through Andover, um, and to tie into Lawrence. I believe, like I said, it was before my time, but I believe Andover expressed, um, they were not interested in us going... I believe, like I said, it was before my time, but I believe Andover expressed they were not interested in us going through downtown Andover. So there's been a few different options that we've started to discuss. One of them was going up twenty-eight. Another one was to go up one-twenty-five, touch a small piece of one-fourteen, and then loop back down into Andover. And then tie into their system. And then the third aspect that was discussed was just going, like I said, originally at one-twenty-five into one-fourteen directly into Lawrence. So there's been three different options that have been discussed right now. You know, I think all of them show, show, you know, there's gonna be some, some complications in all of them, but. You know, our intention last week of meeting with North Andover was just to get the discussion going.
I believe there's an update with regard to water as well and some, some progress.
There is, yep, yeah, I can touch on, and if anybody has any questions, I know Mark's here, he's, he's had a lot to do with it as well.
Does anyone have any questions on the wastewater update?
Just a little further clarification, I think I mentioned it a couple of meetings ago, is that, you know, Andover, when we first discussed this with Andover. Through the negotiations with the ninety-nine-year deal on the water. Everybody's intention was to go up Route twenty-eight, but if you recall, you know, last year, they had the Columbia gas situation. And as a result of. The needs to upgrade all of the gas pipelines, you know, through the town of Andover, the Shawshien section. A significant amount of. Digging up and redoing of Route twenty-eight in the downtown area of Andover in the Shawshien section has already taken place. And their appetite for. Digging up their downtown and their Shawshien area again is diminished. And that's why they asked us to take a look at the alternative, alternative routes. So originally, we're talking about going up twenty-eight, that was the original discussion with Andover. They weren't too objectionable to taking a look at it and seeing, looking at it and seeing what. Upgrades and infrastructure they would need in their community to accommodate us at the time. But since then, because of the Columbia gas situation, where everything's been dug up and now been redone. Their appetite to do it in short order, in a short period of time is not, not there, so.
Hopefully, we're pushing back on that, because why would we go up? One-fourteen here or one-twenty-five there when. We have a straight and direct pathway that we're doing.
Actually, our consultants.
Reroute it for Columbia gas for, because they say they don't want that anymore, because we already dug it up for that. That makes zero logical sense, zero. Our project back now, now we're here in another five or ten years. Because they're doing other work on those, those connections and areas, so hopefully, our team is pushing back on that.
Actually, our consultants.
Ridiculous suggestion for us to go to one-fourteen or one-twenty-five to get sewer up twenty-eight. More money than what this is potentially gonna cost us. Does anyone else have any questions?
Madam Chair, just in relation to that, our consultants have actually informed us that the one-twenty-five, one-fourteen route may actually be more advantageous. More advantageous and less costly.
To run sewer up twenty-eight?
Up one-twenty, yes, yeah.
So I'd like to see that, that's news to me. Do we get any memo or information on that from our, from our expert?
We've had considerable discussions, and when they took a look at it, it's extremely viable.
It's, they're kind of veering off into a completely different direction, literally, literally for this project.
We were directed that way, and when they took a look at it, they said, okay, you have no other.
We've been directed that way by, by, by our neighbor, and. Does our expert, you know, our expert has to kind of redirect it to attract, it's helpful to us.
You have to keep in mind, there's no other infrastructure in one-twenty-five right now for sewerage, so this would be all new infrastructure. No other upgrades to the town of Andover, whether it be the pumping stations, or other upgrades to their piping. And the capacity to treat the sewerage and pump it through. An upgrade, and it's just, it's a straight shot.
That's, that, I'd love to see the memo that our expert prepared for us on that, veering it off into this direction. But I'm not the only member on the board. Does anyone else have any questions about this update, this, Mrs. Gonzalez?
I was just in, in my mind, thinking the same thing that you just said out loud, that it seemed. Kind of crazy going all that way around, and I can't understand how that wouldn't be more costly, but. Yeah.
Madam Chair, just to add to it, too. If we were to go up twenty-eight through Andover, we would, not only would we, we have to make a sewage pump building. Regardless of what direction we go, if we go through Andover, we would tie into the Shawshien Valley Pump Station in Andover. We would also have to pay Andover to make upgrades to that building and that infrastructure. We would also then be required to, to, to pay them, probably monthly or yearly, to use their facility. Where if we were to go one-fourteen, one-twenty-five, I believe it's a seven-mile stretch, and our engineers have said that. We could do one pump station at the Andover Line and make that direct pump all the way to Lawrence. So there is, there is added, if we were to go one-fourteen, one-twenty-five, we wouldn't have to get involved with Andover's pump station at all.
No, and I, I think it's important for us to be having these updates at these meetings, so. We can see the direction that this is taking, but prior to these updates, I think it's important for us to see those kind of. Modifications or, you know, expert reviews, so that we can have the benefit of reviewing them as well. So if you could upload that stuff to our, you know, folder, Mr. Gilberto, that would be great. And I, I didn't want to interrupt you, Mr. Deming, because I know you're gonna, actually, does anyone else have, Mr. Wallner, any questions?
I just, you know, it's obviously getting complicated, but I'm not surprised, it's a big project, so. Yeah, I don't have any questions at this point.
I know you're doing, you're gonna do water too, Mr. Deming, but Mr., just so, just on the waste, Mr. Studo, any questions? Good, all right, so, Mr. Deming, can you, did you wanna?
Absolutely.
Go, go ahead on the water.
So we, North Reading's received the inter-basin transfer agreement. We're now at a hundred percent complete with all of our permits for the water project. As far as the other two projects that we have going on, the water main. On Mount Vernon and North Street. Both of them, we've received all the bids back. Wright Pierce is right now reviewing the bids, and they plan to recommend within the week. That project, for those of you that don't know, is, is planned to start in spring of twenty-two-one. And that would be Mount Vernon and North Street from the Moose Tower to Lowell Road. The projected cost for that project was two-point-five million. The lowest bid came in at one-point-seven million, so about eight-hundred thousand dollars under. There were fourteen total bidders, ranging from the one-point-seven million to two-point-four was the highest. So like I said, our engineers are reviewing that right now to make their recommendation, hopefully this week. And for the chemical buildings, as you may recall, we have put that out to bid. The numbers that came back from the one contractor that bid on it were extremely high, so we decided to put that back out to bid. The filed subbid due date is this Wednesday, the twenty-first. And the general contracts are Wednesday, the fourth of November. Both of those dates were scheduled for the week before. We got some feedback from a few of the companies that planned to bid on it, that there was a large project going on in another part of the state. They had asked if we had pushed both of those dates back by a week to allow for some flexibility for those contractors to bid. Which we have done, so both of those were originally scheduled for the week before those dates, but they were pushed back a week. And last Wednesday, we had a pre-bid meeting for potential bidders of that project, for any questions or comments that they had. And the project deadlines for that, for those two chemical buildings are April fifteenth of twenty-two for Main Street. And August thirty-first of twenty-two for the Central Street Chemical Building.
Did you have any attendees at your pre-bid meeting?
I believe there was one company, I was not, they're, Mark was, I believe there was, I believe there was one.
Okay, any members have any questions or comment with regard to the water update?
Are we on schedule? Are we on job?
So we, we are delayed a little bit from where we originally thought, because we, we did put it back out to bid. But, you know, we, we've. Been meeting on this for a while, since I've been involved, and I think our plans to rebid it are right on track now. So like I said, in the grand scheme of the entire project, we are delayed, but, you know, we, we did it for the right reasons. The, the one company that bid on it the first time was over significant amount that we thought the job was worth. And that's why we put it back on bid.
Madam, what is the projected date, what is the estimated, you know, time?
Mike, do you remember the exact?
Sure, so I believe the timeline is for the Main Street Station to be completed by the end of the construction season. Next year.
April of twenty-two.
I'm sorry, that's, so it's actually, twenty-two with.
August of twenty-two for Central Street, but we're anticipating that both will be completed about the same time. And again, we're looking at the April date, because that brings us just to the timeline where the peak demand starts to pick up. You know, with the watering of lawns and filling your pools and all the rest, so. We're looking to have that completed, and up and running, the chlorination plant before that, that time period. So, you know, in relation to, you know, have we, has the timeline slipped, you know, we were looking to have most of this completed, you know, next fall. But from a logistical standpoint and functional or administrative standpoint, these timelines work. And the bid that came in was substantially more than anybody anticipated it to be. It was the only bidder, a lot of other, we were competing with a lot of other contracts and same timeline. And we decided to push it out in order to attract other.
Yep.
Other, other developers to do it, so it seems to be working in our favor at this point.
So I'm hearing April of twenty-two, is that?
Twenty-two for the chlorination plant at the Andover Line at North Main Street.
Yep.
And that's where most of the water comes in from Andover, and we need to treat it there. And again, that would coincide with the high-demand season picking up at that point.
Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just something to add to that, you know, the timeline. We, we were able to utilize a temporary interconnection and temporary water treatment during the high-demand season this past summer. And the intention, and we are authorized to do so for, for next summer as well. So in, you know, in terms of, you know, being at the point where we're drawing all of our water from Andover, we have been at that point. Since roughly, I think, January of this year, and we will continue to be in that status. What we're talking about here is the expansion of some pipes, as well as a new permanent treatment facility and a replacement of a treatment facility. But in terms of the, you know, the, you know, being at that spot of being able to draw our water, we have been at that spot since January. For the heavy watering season in May, we were also able to do so because of the temporary interconnection. That, that's there. The second thing that I just wanted to note is that. You know, this is clearly a lot of information, but. You know, it's a lot of, a lot of progress, particularly the permitting, to have that permit in hand now. And to have that permanent permit, and to know that we're on a path to get out from underneath an administrative consent order as well. You know, that's a great spot for us to be in, and it, and it's a testament to work by a lot of people. You know, I think that we'll all be happy when all the pipes are in the ground, and when the, the pump stations are all up and running, the permanent stations. But we are certainly pleased to be going in this direction. I guess the final thing, too, I'll just add, is that, you know, we've seen some success with rebidding projects. Some of you are familiar with the restroom concession facility at the High School Turf Field and.
Not relive that one.
But, you know, as difficult as it was, probably one of the best decisions we made was to rebid that very late in the game. And I think we sort of, you know, took that same strategy here, and. You know, we're hopeful that it'll pay off in terms of the overall construction costs for the project, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you for hanging in there, giving us the update, and. Waiting through the couple of hearings, so, or the, the public hearing. All right, so we're gonna move on, we're gonna see you soon with another update, I'm sure. And we're gonna move on to our next order of business, which is the eight o'clock. Hearing on Kitty's Restaurant Change of Beneficial Interest. We do have. Petitioner. I'm sorry, we do have the petitioner here.
Yes, I see, Mr. Ware, Mrs. Burke Meyer as well.
All right, go ahead. So please introduce yourselves with your, state your name and address for the record.
Do you want to read the hearing notice first?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Studo. Do you have a copy of the hearing notice? Just one minute, I'm sorry.
I'm hoping that was in the packet. It may not be in the packet, Madam Chair. Let's see if we can find it.
I think separately, we received the, in the folder separately, we received a packet on this, but I don't recall. Seeing a notice in that packet either. You, you separated out the files.
Yeah, we, we did, and it's, it must have been when we separated it, we did not. Connect the hearing notice. If you'd like, I can actually grab the paper copy of it and read it, if you'd like.
Please.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna look at one more spot.
Where did, where was this posted? Where did you post this in the transcript?
I, I do have it, it did go in the North Reading Transcript, I have it here, thank you for the patience.
Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you. Notice of public hearing, in accordance with Chapter one-thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws. A virtual public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Monday, October nineteenth, twenty-twenty, at eight o'clock PM. On the application of Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge Incorporated, one-twenty-three Main Street, for a change in beneficial interest. Hearing may be accessed as follows, there's information relative to the internet and telephone access. Signed, the previous notice on October first, twenty-twenty, did not include the passcode necessary to access the meeting, so it was re-advertised to include that passcode. And it is signed, Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto, okay. Now, well, whoops. After the petitions, you had begun to say, why don't you just give us a couple of sentences about what you're trying to do? We did receive your documentation, and essentially, you're before us, because you're just shifting, you're, you're changing the beneficial owners of the business.
Correct.
Oh, please state your name, names.
Deborah Burke Meyer, twenty-three Westwood Circle in North Reading.
And I'm John Weir, um director on the board, sixty-seven Winter Street in North Reading.
Welcome. Anything you want to add on the petition?
No, not really.
Mr. Gilberto, anything else that the board should, I mean, we have the packet. It's a, it seems to be a pretty straightforward shift of honor interest.
Yeah, that, that's correct. I mean, I, I, and again, the, the petitioners can correct me, but it looks like it's a, a rearranging of the uh ownership percentages amongst the family. Ownership associated with the restaurant. And um I know that there was initially an application to um change manager to uh, to Scott White. Um, and that was something that ultimately did not need to be processed. And that is because, and some of the board members may recall that you approved a tran, a change of manager, I think going back two years now. Um, that was submitted to the A B C C and was approved, but was never returned to us as approved. So we did, we did confirm with the A B C C that their records are reflected. Scott is in fact the manager of record. So it is only the change of beneficial interest that's pending tonight.
Oh, thank you for explaining that petition to us, Mr. Gilberto. I appreciate that. I'm sure the members of the board do too. Do the members have any questions of the petitioners with regard to this transaction? Mr. O'Leary?
Uh, no, Madam Chair. I'm well aware, this is just a uh situation of basically estate planning purposes. Uh, the next generation taking over and continuing the uh business and uh being good members of the business community makes sense to me and really supportive of their, uh, their efforts to uh, to achieve what they need to do here.
Thanks for that edification. Mr. Studo, do you have any questions or all set? Mrs. Gonzalez?
As long as that salad dressing recipe doesn't change, I'm okay.
Mr. Wallner, any questions?
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Um, Gilberto, all the paperwork, the required paperwork uh is in order on this. Everything that, that we needed to, the petition to provide has been provided.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so um, since it's a public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this petition? I see none. Mr. Gilberto, you don't see any hands raised, right?
I don't see any visual hands and I don't see any electronic hands.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. And do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve a change of beneficial interest for the common, which is all alcohol license for Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, one twenty-three Main Street.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Um, Gilberto, I hope you kept that paper notice.
I have it.
Good. All right. Our next order of business is Paradise R Two Incorporated Doing Business as New England Beverage Transfer License. And we'll just ask Mr. Gilberto to read that, to read the notice publication into the record.
Certainly. Notice of public hearing in accordance with chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws. A virtual public hearing will be held on the select board, held by the select board on Monday, October nineteenth, twenty-twenty, at eight fifteen P M. On the application of Paradise, Paradise R Two Incorporated Doing Business as New England Beverage. For the transfer of the package store all alcohol license from Sunny Riva Incorporated D B A New England Beverage and Redemption. License to be exercised at one sixty Main Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, in a two-story building occupying nine thousand nine hundred and eighty square feet. Selling space on first floor offices and storage on second. Hearing may be accessed as follows via the internet and via telephone uh using Zoom technology. And it's signed by the select board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilberto. We are joined by the uh current licensee and the petitioner. If you wouldn't mind identifying yourselves with your name and address for the record.
Hi guys, my name is Sarah Patel. Everyone calls me Sunny. Uh, address is five Bevere Street, Taunton, Massachusetts, zero two seven eight zero. I am the current licensee of uh New England Beverage, uh doing business as Sunny Ria Incorporated.
Thank you. And uh, go ahead, Mr. Lang.
Hi, how are you doing? My name is Kevin Lang. I'm proposed, uh, I'm new owner. And my uh address is two eighty Paradise Road in Swanscott, Massachusetts.
And you're here to such a lot of feedback.
There's a lot of echo there, yes.
I think because we're twelve-five, so that's probably why. I'm sitting at two eighty Paradise Road, Swanscott, Massachusetts.
Is there any way to prevent that feedback?
I think if Mr. Lang and Ms. could just both mute and only unmute when they're speaking and maybe the other could turn their volume down. Looks like they may be in the same spot.
Okay. Okay. So we're, we're gonna hear you on the petition. It's a, we're opening the public camera, gonna hear you on the petition. So if you would go ahead and give us some information about your petition, tell the board about your petition.
Uh, I can start if um, if you guys can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so I'm the current owner. I am the recent father of a newborn, a baby. Uh, August, so things have changed for me in my whole world and um.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Um, so it's time for me to move on to um being a father and apparently the commute and everything else um was definitely a challenge. So um, I, I talked to Kevin, he's an old friend of mine, and uh it's time to pass on um my short legacy, I should say. And I've only been in town and been doing business in North Reading has been a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. Uh, I've been there only for five years and um sadly to say, I have to um, yeah, kinda sell. But it's, it's that time unfortunately, but.
Okay, thank you. I, I mean, congratulations and.
Thank you.
Uh, these are life decisions. So let's hear from the petitioners if you wouldn't mind giving us some information about your experience, your training. Um, your, your background, your, your employment background and some information that you can give the, the board to consider.
Guys, would it be easier to just uh both of you guys get on one screen? And if you guys.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're doing now.
Okay.
Hi, how you doing? Good evening for the board member and everybody's. Uh, my name is Kevin Langs. My wife sit next to me here. We are the proposed buyer for the new location that Sunny been run for five year. And the, the location is well-known for me and uh Sunny been run for five year. And then right now he decide to change his um way of living down further South Shore. So he call me, see if I can take over. So I agree for, to do that. And right now be really be happy to take over if the board allowed to transfer. And I have experience on the liquor business for so long. I have a different location and with partnership with other location, uh different town. But North Reading is the first one that I'm coming in. So the experience to run the liquor business is well experienced for me. So I'm asked the board if the board can be approved for a transfer license. And I will do my best to run the location as the way it is. As the best in town.
Okay, and I, I can see that you're, it looks like you already are at an establishment. Is that another business that you own?
Yes.
Where is that located?
This one is located in Swanscott.
And are you the manager of that business?
My wife is a manager.
So how many hours do you plan to spend at this uh proposed location?
The proposed location, I'm gonna spend at least sixty hour. My wife's gonna be there close to forty or fifty hours also.
And how many other establishments do you own?
I have one in uh Summerwill, Massachusetts. And I have one in um South Boston as the partnership, fifty percent partnership.
Okay, and are you the servant as the manager of those as well?
Yes, but those are only part-time over there. I have a managers over there, but I'm just in charge of uh look over the manager.
Okay. And have you ever had any issues of disciplinary action with regard to the other establishments that you own or have interested?
The other location that established right now don't have any discipline, but the previous one that we've been um sold. I have one about fifteen years ago in um Lynn.
Okay, but nothing currently?
No, nothing currently.
Do you have um, do you have any businesses that you own in other states?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I um ask him because Mr. Gilberto, I don't think the application was in our packet. I didn't see it.
It's here. It's here. Separate folder, the separate, separate item in the packet tonight.
I saw that, but it looks like a tip certificate.
No, it's the application.
The application should be behind it, um, Madam Chair, but I have a question through you.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Studo, Mr. Studo's got his hand up. Well, we'll get to you, Mr. Gilberto. But Mr. Studo, go ahead.
I have a question about current. Um, if I'm reading this directly, if I'm reading this accurately, so what's the day, the nineteen? Yesterday, there was a violation there in New England Beverage.
Oh, I.
Well, I, I just let me finish. Let me ask. So the violation here says that uh, it, you know, a pack of whatever, a twelve pack of Bud Light was sold to someone underage. When questioned, Mr. Ling said that, I hope I said that correctly, that the person looked twenty-one and they were still in training. So my question is, well, if you give me a resume of all that experience, I don't, the, the two, the two, the, the statement and what was just said here don't mix.
Um, let me answer it. Oh, yesterday's situation, I was there. Um, Sunny was upstairs and then I would try to uh help him out. Why he take, um, I think he take a little break. So I did make a mistake there by miscalculate him. And the previous one, um, Sunny check on him. I see he check on him. We have, he have an I D. But at this time, I assuming it's the same gentleman there. So I make the under, misunderstand.
So the person in question, I believe, has been to the establishment with an I D. Um, whether or not it's been a fake or not, that's on me. So I take full responsibility for that. Um, but in the last five years, I've never had any violation on my license. And in the past ten years, I've never had a violation on any of my other businesses as well. Um, so again, I'm so, so sorry about that happened and especially on a Sunday. But uh, over the course of last five years in North Reading, I've confiscated a lot of fake licenses. Uh, whether it be from people out of state, Maine, a lot of kids from Andover used to come in and visit our establishment thinking they can get away. Doing certain things, but uh I actually built a wall of fake I Ds um right behind the counter to deter people from buying underage. And it's been working for a long time. And yesterday, like I said, I, I am so sorry that happened and I will assure you. Uh, it's not gonna happen under my reign and Kevin's either. Kevin is like, in the last fifteen years, he's only had one violation. So that can attest to his um responsibilities still. And uh, we will, I will promise you this, this, that it, it's, it's not right, but it's not gonna happen again. I can assure you.
Can I, I'm just gonna follow up. So you said that maybe the person was there and could have had a fake I D in the past.
That's my guess, because based on the surveillance footage, it seemed like I recognized the person.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask is, I mean, this is someone who came in with the police department, volunteered. So if that's the case, they used a fake I D, but then volunteered to help the police on a sting? So I don't know. I mean, I'm just curious.
Yeah, that, that, that is definitely weird, but I do, from what I'd seen, I did kind of like from the surveillance tapes, recognize the fellow. But again, sorry, but it's not gonna happen again. It's a strict, strict policy. And I'm, I'm assuming that the, the police department has run multiple things on me in the past. And um, I've never let the ball slide and uh I did this time. So again, I'm, I apologize for that.
Mrs. Studo, do you have any other questions for the petitioner?
No, not, not from the, if, the only thing I would say is again, um, you know, thank you for volunteering that information. But if it was the case that it was someone who may have gotten away with it at the past and then we just assumed he was twenty-one, I think, I think it's easy.
Yeah, if we.
I think it's, it'll be easy to answer that question because we can just ask uh Detective Mara and Detective Lucci of whether or not this person has done this before for them. And if the answer is no, then we just, I mean, we, we know who the person is. That's the question. So we can directly get that answer. So that, that's, that's all I wanted to add.
Okay. Like I said, from the surveillance footage, it seemed like the custom, the, the person in question was there. And I, from what I understand, I did check his I D before. So, but it's, we have, I've been known in town to confiscate I Ds uh over the past five years. I've literally ripped up, I've had people try to snatch them out of my hands and a lot of other things in the past. And um, I don't tolerate that. I never have and.
Mr. Patel, we appreciate your explaining this, but we're really here to hear from the petitioner.
Sorry, yeah, no.
If you don't mind not talking over people too, from what I understand. I, I heard the petitioner say he was the one that did the sale. Am I mistaken when I hear that? Did, was it, was it you, Mr. Lang?
Yes, I did.
And Mr. Patel wasn't even there? Is that?
Yeah, he was step out and then I'll jump, jump and help him out on that moment. So I'm the one that take um, make a mistake that, that sale.
Okay, so you currently employed there?
Um, no, I'm in the training there.
You're in training?
Yeah, I'm going there, watch the business and see how it runs and almost every day, yes.
Okay, he, he wants to check up on, uh, sorry, may I speak? Sorry.
So I, I'd like to give uh opportunity for the other members to ask any questions of the petitioner. Mr. Waller, have you, um, miss, I'm, I'm gonna get to you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Wallner, any questions?
I just ask for the new, for the new owners, has anybody done a background check on them to verify, you know, the claims? Has that, is that standard practice? I don't know if that's standard practice or not.
Mr. Gilberto?
Our, our practice is that we do a um a Cory check and a civil fingerprinting check on their background. Um, they also are required to fill out um an application which you received in the packet. That details what they've done um in terms of, you know, extensive follow-up with uh outside of the community on the businesses that they claim to run. We do not generally do that. Um, although these uh transactions are all reviewed by the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, so they may conduct that. Uh, but that's the extent of, of, of our review.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Waller?
Uh, so when does the Al, when does the A B C C do their thing?
A- after the board votes favorably, it's forwarded to the A B C C um for their, uh, their approval as well.
Um, okay, thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, do you have the equipment in the store that runs the I Ds and tells whether they're valid or not? I forget the name of it.
There is an I D check system software, but we, I do not have that because I've been using handmade books that I get from the beer distributors every year. And that has a lot of detailed information in terms of to spot fakes and whatnot. And that is what I use to spot a lot of fake I Ds myself. Um, but in terms of a software, I do not have uh um a verification software. Um, but in terms of a software, I do not have, uh, um, a verification software. But Kevin and Susan can definitely look into getting one there. Not that, um, hard to obtain.
If you definitely will.
We will do that. Um, may I say something?
Of course.
Um, so, Mr. Waller, I did have my Corey checked on this morning, so that's all situated, and you went back to the town already?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The Corey checks are part of this, and there's a requirement for Department of Revenue form to be provided to make sure that the parties are up to date with their, all of their financial requirements, and, um, I think all the Corey's, the Corey's did come back already, right, Mr. Gilberto? Both Corey's came back.
I believe so, yes.
And both petitioners are, uh, have their tips document. I did see that, the tips documentation there. Mrs. Gonzalez, do you have any other questions?
No, I just, it's unfortunate that that violation had to happen at this, at any time, but especially at this time, it makes this decision a little bit more difficult, you know, to consider.
But, excuse me, Mr. Ling, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I may, may say something, ma'am, um, the situation that happened yesterday is unfortunately, it's happened, it shouldn't be happened, and I promise you, if I will run in there, if the board allowed to transfer the license, we'll guarantee it's never gonna happen. We'll put the equipment in there, we'll make sure the, uh, all the employee will be trained, and they all have to be a tip class, and they all have to be trained very well to, uh, to catch the underage. We, we're running the business, we have intention to run the best business in town, so we don't have any of those situation. My intention is to be the best neighbor in town, if the board allowed to transfer.
Do you have any other questions, Mrs. Gonzalez?
No, thank you.
Um, Mr. O'Leary, any questions?
Just to the applicants and your other establishments, do you have any of this, uh, software for identifying fake identification?
The, the other establishing, we don't have it also, so.
Then, um, I was looking at, at your application. I don't see anything listed in South Boston. I see the Summerwell, Swanscombe. Uh, you mentioned someplace in South Boston. I just don't see that on the application.
Um, I see silent partner, fifty percent silent partner.
Silent partner, okay.
Yes.
There is no such thing as a silent partner in a liquor license.
Must be economically. Anyway, I, I do see the certificate of good standing, uh, tax compliance, and I see the same thing for, um, division of unemployment, so that's all set as far as the application goes for me, uh, to transfer it over. I would just like to say that, you know, Sonny's been a good member of the business community for, for five years, and congratulations on the birth of your child. You and Mr. Studo have something in common here, although he's got two up on you, so he's got three up now.
Losing sleep but enjoying every minute of it.
Yeah, yeah.
You can ask for a better experience.
Well, if you want to, you wanna know about experience, you just give Vincenzo a call, he'll, he'll pull you in a little bit. But again, I appreciate, you know, you being a good member of the business community. Um, I intend on voting for the, the transfer. Again, it's an unfortunate set of circumstances that occurred yesterday, obviously. You know, I would anticipate that you, you would put in, uh, the requisite amount of, the software to, uh, do a little better job in relation to the identifying, cuz I don't think it's that expensive, uh, to do. So I intend on, on supporting the, uh, the application, the petition here. But, and then welcome you to the community, uh, if the rest of the board members go along with this, and look forward to having a long and successful career here, but, uh, again, be mindful that, you know, our local police department does a very good job of, um, as Sonny can verify.
They do an excellent job, and they're always there for you when you need them, so they're a great asset.
But, but again, it's unfortunate what occurred. But I still think it's, uh, the application and the experience that you bring warrants the support of the application.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. I'm gonna, we got a couple of red flags here, so if your application doesn't have your interest, whether you call it silent or not, you're gonna have to submit a updated application with any interest that you have. Because the application is pretty comprehensive, and it, if you have a beneficial interest, we just went through a public hearing for just a shift of, of what Mr. O'Leary explained was an estate planning matter. Uh, we just went through a, a public hearing on a, a petition where when we got the edification from different people from the town on that petition, we learned a little bit about what that was about. So even that slight change of, uh, ownership of beneficial interest is required to come before the board, so whatever you have has to be in that application, and there's, there should be, that information should be included. And I wouldn't be in favor of it unless it's amended, and that's a contingency of your, you know, amending your application to include anything that you have a beneficial interest in. It's our job to investigate, review, and see whether you're a, a good candidate, whether you're, you know, by telling us you have something that's not even on there, that's a big red flag, so. Um, Mr., um, Mr. Patel, was it Mr. O'Leary or Mr. Patel, Mr. Patel? Go ahead.
Um, so from what I understand is, it was, so from that red flag you were speaking of, it's, it was a more of a monetary transaction rather than an actual, ownership of the license, if I understand it correctly, cuz, um, it was, they've been friends and associates and colleagues for a long time. And it was more or less, they loaned money to the other party, uh, the owner, and then it was, uh, uh, more or less a handshake, um, deal with, between them. So when Kevin mentioned he has, he, he helps him out and gives him staffing and whatnot, from what I understand, but I think Kevin can speak more on that if, um, he needs to elaborate, but.
He was pretty clear, saying he was a fifty percent owner, so that should be on an application.
Okay.
But, okay, does that, does anyone else have any questions? And we'll, we'll get to speaking in favor, and again, Mr. Studo, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, um, Mr. Ling, what's the name of the place in South Boston where you have just a monetary interest, if I'm understanding that place?
It's called, it's called Broadway Social Wines.
Okay.
It's a retail, retail establishment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if, and is there anything else, um, that any of the, any members have any questions on? All set to the members, and is there, is there, I'm gonna take, um, question, uh, comment and, and, um, public comment, but, Mr., I, I see your hand, Mr. Greenberg, but just let me, Mr. Gilberto, if you don't mind, he might have some more information, then we'll get, we'll get you, okay? Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you. I was going to ask for an explanation relative to, um, the location in South Boston, because it is not in Section six A, his interest in an alcoholic beverage license, so. Um, that was my first comment. The second was, um, just with regard to the, you know, procedure here. For the board members who may not know, the board customarily will take a vote at a meeting to schedule a show cause hearing for a future meeting when it receives a report of a potential violation, as was the case here. Um, and so, you know, in this case, that's, those are steps that are going to need to take place, at least the initial consideration of a vote was not on the agenda for this evening. Um, obviously, so I'm not asking that vote take place this evening, but we certainly should look to do that sooner rather than later, so that a hearing can be scheduled sooner rather than later, if there is in fact gonna be a transfer of the license, um, so that it can, you know, any potential discipline can be served by the current licensee. So I, I do want folks to keep that in, in mind, and Madam Chair, you and I can talk about what the best way to handle that, whether we schedule a quick special meeting to schedule that hearing, so that we can address, um, that, that issue, because it does, it's normally something that gets scheduled for a hearing, and then there's a full presentation, as the board members know.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm gonna open the, oh, gonna open the hearing up to anyone that would like to speak in favor or against, or have, has comment, and I did see Mr. Greenberg. You're on mute, so if you could unmute yourself.
Okay, I, this is a little awkward. I, I'm, I'm sitting here because I'm interested in an agenda item that's down the agenda. And I just sort of sitting here and watching. Now, coincidentally, I just retired from a fifty-year career practicing law, and I represented during the course of my career many, many license holders, and I am familiar with the requirements of Chapter one thirty-eight. And just in passing, I am deeply, deeply troubled what I have just heard. Because I've heard, what I've heard sounds like an admission of a knowing violation of a very important provision of Chapter one thirty-eight. And I've heard Mr. Patel try to deflect and defer that. I'm really troubled by this application. I'm done.
Okay. All right, thank you for your comment, and, and, oh, thanks for sticking around. Uh, we'll, we'll get to your stuff too, pretty soon. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this application in favor or against? I do not see any hands, any other hands. Mr. Gilberto?
I don't see any electronic or real hands.
Okay. Any other, so seeing none, I'm gonna close that portion of the hearing. Uh, is there any other comments, and we can take a motion, deliberate, discuss further? Mr. Studo, do you have a motion? You're on mute. You're on mute.
So we will, we're gonna vote tonight? I thought it was.
Is the application complete? I thought it wasn't.
No, I mean, if, yeah, if it's not complete and we have to, I don't know, I, I can read it, I just thought that, I mean, I'd, I'd like to, before I vote, I'd like to, you know, find out if, if it was a disclosable event based on how the deal was structured. And, you know, and I think Mr. Gilberto just said too, for whether, you know, I don't, no, I'm not saying whether or not it would derail anything, but for what happened yesterday, Mr. Gilberto, did I hear correctly that that needs to be like recorded somehow first before a vote? Or should?
Uh, I, I'm only saying that, um, the board customarily votes to schedule a hearing, has the hearing, and then if there is any discipline that's issued, you know, that that discipline would need to be, um, affected, whether it's a suspension or some other, some other action. Um, and that, you, I think, I would presume the board's intention would be that it would be served by the current, current ownership. But that, that's more in some form on my part.
So we don't have a, so what, if, Mr. Studo, we, we don't have a, a disciplinary matter on the agenda to discuss this evening, though I'm sure we would all like to discuss that. It did come up in the presentation because we're trying to determine character and reputation and sufficiency of the petitioner as part of our responsibilities here, and their ability to hold the, hold the retail license, um, and comply with the law. So that did come up, just like a Corey check comes up and other things come up for us. Um, so we don't have the discipline before us to address, so we don't, we're not, we not gonna, we can't hold it as a reason not to grant or deny the license. We have to do that independently of that disciplinary matter, although
Okay.
we know, we know from the information that it was the petitioner that did the sale. Um, so we, we do at least have that fact before us right now as we're considering this application, so.
Can I just ask one more question then, if that's the case? Do you mind? I'm not trying to drag this on, but, and this question is, Mr. Ugg, the, for Broadway Social Wines, who is the actual registered owner? Who's the primary who runs it? The name?
It is Said.
Jules Said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just, just, again, this is just public record. Uh, Mr. Ugg's name's nowhere near the ownership on the Secretary of State's anything, so if it is, if it is monetarily silent, then it, I mean, it's really silent, like old school silent, just, you know, I just wanted to, that, that's why I asked for the name. I just wanted to look that up for my own thing, so I don't know. So the question is, I'm not a lawyer, Mr. Greenberg, thank you for that, and Ms. Menipelli, I know you are, but does, because that's the case, that he's technically nowhere near registered on the business and his name's not on it, would that be disclosable?
Yes, because it's part of the application, so, and even the financing of a transaction, but we don't really know, if you wanna ask more questions of it, but we don't really have that other application before us and to see what was submitted on that, but
Okay.
any type of a loan that's granted for someone to obtain a license has to be disclosed, even if it's a personal loan, a promissory note, a bank loan, anything like that is part, is part of the financing of a licensed transaction, because the ABCC follows the money, and we're supposed to get a specific amount of documentation demonstrating where the money's coming from for the purchase, but the ABCC goes even further and follows the money trail here. So they, they have, also have an intense financial review of these applications.
So, thank you for clarifying.
Um, so we can, the, our option, if you wanted to consider, and I don't know, um, I, I feel, if we're gonna vote on this, we can also, we have the option to vote on it and vote on it with these contingencies that could be added, which would include them providing a full disclosure in their application. We have the option of, uh, you know, tabling it or continuing the public hearing to a later date till we have that. I don't know what the board's pleasure is here, so. Mr. O'Leary, you're in favor of us moving it forward?
Either, I'm, I'm in favor of continuing it until the board members get comfort level, one way or the other, uh, so continue it till our next meeting. That's what, a couple of weeks?
Yeah, November second is what I see.
Yeah.
And is that, um, the general consensus? Mr. Waller?
Yeah, I, I kinda feel good about, let's get this cleaned up a little bit, you know, um, then let's give us a little bit more time to get things straightened out. Two weeks doesn't sound like a lot to us, from my point of view.
Okay, Miss, Miss Gonzalez?
I agree. I'd like to table it, um, get the application squared away and have all our information.
Okay. And Mr. Studo, I think that's where you are, you're at. Okay, so, Mr. Gilberto, where what we're, would like to do is continue the public hearing?
Yes.
Would take a motion to do that?
Do we have anything else scheduled for that night, for public hearing wise?
Um, I do not believe we have anything at this point in time. So we can schedule it for seven thirty, or something like that, if the board wanted.
Madam Chair, I move to continue the public hearing on the application till, uh, November second at eight P M.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. O'Leary and a second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Menipelli is aye. Thank you. Okay, so we'll be back. We'll, we're gonna a- afford you the opportunity to complete the application so that we can do more of our own vetting of the application and get some of these questions answered. And then we will have you back to conclude the public hearing at our next meeting, okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You.
All right, our next order of business is the report from server training program auditor. Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, thank you, and, uh, the board's designated auditor, Ms. Luckowitz is with us here this evening. Amy, how are you?
Hi, everybody.
Good evening. Thank you for hanging in there.
Of course.
And I know that stuff is important to you. What we were just talking about is pretty important to you.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, if it's okay, I'd like to share a screen. I, um, have a very brief presentation.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. So I am gonna start with, um, the tips compliance overview, and just before I start, I do wanna clarify something. Although we often call it tips, it's actually, um, a responsible server training. Tips is actually a brand name. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that, because as, uh, vendors start submitting their applications, you might not see the name Tips. Um, ServeSafe, for example, does one, and I've actually come across, uh, four. ServeSafe, for example, does one. And I've actually come across four or five different training options. So for the purpose of tonight, I'll, I'll call it TIPS because that's kind of what we call it around the industry. So during the first quarter, I was able to complete visits to all of the retail and common victory holders, license holders. You can see that we had during quarter one, two violations and then six violations. Of course, because that was the first time we had ever done it, there were no repeat violations. Rightfully so during quarter two, I was sidelined, not allowed to go into those businesses if they were even open. And so I recently completed quarter number three where you can see that we had a total of six violations. I am happy, oh, excuse me, two of those were repeat violations. You can see it was Eastgate and Joe Fish. I will tell you that in all cases, all violations work with me very quickly to update their TIPS training. Or get, get me a copy of the certificate that may or may not be, or is not on, on the location. I will note that on, during both of those quarters, I was unable to visit Hillview. I visited, I think, a total of eight times, eight to 10 times, never was able to catch them open. And from what I understand from the pro shops specifically Hillview, they really haven't been operating at all. One of the key highlights though is after the first quarter, through a small grant with Winchester Hospital, I was able to offer all of the retailers as well as the restaurants, anybody who wanted it actually, including Alder's Gate, who wanted to get compliance trained, a free class. And so we had 68, that's a typo, 60 individuals take that class, saving the businesses a total of $2,165. And I was very thrilled to get that kind of turnaround participation. Again, it's our goal to not have any violations and we could not have made it any easier. We removed the financial cost to getting people trained and that worked very well. Moving forward, I hope that we'll be able to offer that again, although it will be funded from the Drug Free Communities Grant, not the Winchester Grant, as that has expired. I can talk briefly on NRPD compliance. They were able to do observations on three dates. And just to explain what an observation is, we have detectives that go in undercover vehicles to various locations and look for what appear to be underage buyers. And then they run their backgrounds and see if the, if those purchasers are underage. Those had, I'm very, again, happy to say that they had no violations. Those all happened in the first quarter. As you heard, we had two violations yesterday of retail undercover. You just heard about New England Beverage as well as Lucky Mart had a sec, had their violation. And we were not able to do that for restaurants though, because of the rule regarding eating on premises when ordering alcohol. So we're not able to check that. That is something that has been changed since COVID. Of course, we normally would do that, or the NRPD, I should say, would normally do that. It's overseen by detectives. But we weren't able to do that because of the rule related to food. Couple of youth programs I wanted to highlight. The first is Shoulder Taps. And this involved our North Reading Youth Action Team. It was really well received. And what happens is this is targeted for retail locations and it's meant to be an education program. So what happens is our youth stand in front of the venues and they ask customers casually if they would buy alcohol for them. And I'm happy to tell you that we had 47 no's and a whole lot of finger wagging. A whole lot of customers who gave the kids a really good stern talking to before the detective could intervene. That's my best case scenario is that everybody said no. And these are the cards that they get hidden, handed out to them. So if somebody says no, they get a card that says, thank you for protecting our youth. And if somebody were to have agreed to buy them alcohol, they would get a red card that says, think twice. So no violations actually happen. The kids intervene and stop the activity before, before a purchase would even be made. But again, we had a lot of support from a lot of the vendors as well as public who talked to the kids and told them how wrong it was, not knowing that they were basically actors. The second program involving youth is called Sticker Shock. And in this one, these brightly colored stickers go and get placed physically on alcohol beverages. We had five volunteer locations, Ryers, Christopher's, Eastgate, One Stop and Convenience Plus, all agreed to participate. This was, this program was offered to all retail outlets, but only five agreed to participate. And the kids put 850 stickers on different alcoholic beverages. Again, this is paid by the Winchester Grant. I can, do want to give a shout out to Ryers who took it a step ahead and asked for permanent shelf talkers. So we have mounted permanent shelf talkers in their alcoholic beverage section of, of the Ryers store. And this is something, it went over so well that I'm hoping to offer that to the other retail vendors moving forward. I do have a couple of recommendations related to my experience with the TIPS compliance training. Currently, our, the North Reading policy involves a 30-day window where new employees have 30 days to get their TIPS compliance training done. But in that time, they can still serve alcohol. That's a bit of a concern for me that has a huge liability for a lot of people involved. But most importantly, they have no training and they're serving potentially undercover, excuse me, underage youth. And that's something that I would love to see closed. The second is requiring all the TIPS certification or cards to be kept onsite. Nothing in policy nor on the card requires that to happen. Preferably, what I would like to have is that the server has their card on their person because they own the card, and then a copy be kept onsite and available for inspection at any time. An example of that where it's become a problem is Teresa's where they were saying that all the cards were kept in an offsite in Middleton. And in reality, not one person, when I did my visit, it actually had been trained. Or I should say had a current training. They were all expired if they had it at all. And the last one that would really help me out is to request a roster at the time of relicensing. So I, I reviewed briefly the relicensing package. And I understand that vendors need to tell you how many staff they have and then provide that amount of cards to you. But nothing to say that those match up. And so that's what we're finding is that really there's a lot of opportunity for putting forth a, a card for a business that they're not even working in North Reading. So those are three recommendations of policies that I would love to see closed up. I will also mention that I believe North Reading is the only town in the entire area that follows up on this particular program. So I want to thank the board's support in allowing me to do that because I am able to build a lot of relationships with these vendors and say, listen, I don't want to come in and catch you. How can I help train your staff to keep our kids safe? We've had great conversations. Sometimes when I go in and visit, we have conversations about how to protect themselves during COVID, specifically when they don't want to ask anybody to lower their mask. You know, that was something that we started seeing a trend around the beginning of summer. We got some, some notifications and some leads that a lot of vendors were not, not just in North Reading, but across the state, were not properly IDing people because they don't want to ask to lower their mask. And that's totally understandable. But that's where I go in. I say, you need to rely on your other training from TIPS on how to identify or match up an ID to a person. So some great conversations have happened. And I think that is it for my, that report. I'll pause right there. Does Amy have any questions for me?
That's great. Thank you for, thank you for this information. It's really well put together and also given us recommendations on policies. I wish we had this before the, before that public hearing. But let's ask, let's go to the members. Mr. O'Leary, any questions, comments?
No, other than, you know, I appreciate the effort that's being put into this. I think it's important for the public, but also important for the businesses. And I think it's a great service that's being provided here. It's a service, so. Good job, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you. I should have mentioned as well, it does give us an opportunity to also introduce resources that Laura Miranda could offer the businesses as well for their employees if they ever have any concerns about substance use or mental health. And that's been another outlet for us to get her information out there.
Mr. Studo, questions, comments?
Oh, it's great. Like, I agree. I mean, it's I never exactly knew how all the restaurants get tested until, you know, you get involved and you see, it's always like, oh, I wonder, I wonder how that happened. So no, it's nice to know that, um, you know, and even during these trying times where trying to conduct anything that involves restaurants is, I mean, this is, it's not, you know, it's almost like you're told to just don't go unless you absolutely have to. And this is something that it's like, well, it has to get done. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I just want to also thank you, Amy, for a great job. And what came to my mind when you were asking about them having to have the cards available as a licensed cosmetologist, if the state comes in, I have to have my license on me. Not just in the salon, but on my person. So that makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Walner?
Just, just a question. This is great, great stuff. So thank you, Amy. Just a question, you know, as we looked during the last the Patel's and, you know, that transfer, you know, they didn't have the equipment that I think you're recommending. Are you still going to all these places to give them best practices about how they can protect themselves and do a better job? Is that still an active campaign? Cause I know we talked about that maybe six months ago or something like that.
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't recommend any particular brand of software or machine because to be honest with you, if somebody has the money, they're going to be able to beat the machine. I know certain places in town are very expensive ones and they've been beat. So I don't want to get, I would, I would hate to put on a vendor and recommend a $2,000 machine that doesn't work, you know? So we actually say that your best protection is your training, is your TIPS training. Don't rely on the machine. We say this to them all the time. If something doesn't feel right, if you're just unsure, there's no reason you don't, you can't check somebody who's 50 years old or appears under 40. So that's a great question. I'm glad you asked that. I don't typically recommend the machines unless we talk. And even then I don't recommend a brand because of the financial investment. And also because to be honest with you, you know, ultimately it's still their responsibility, you know, they can't rely on that machine and training I've done, by the way, I should mention that there's an online training and an in-person training to, to experience it myself. I've done both of them. I do recommend, one of my best practices is to do the in-person training. I find it to be far superior. You get to talk to a trainer and play out real life scenarios. And he talks to you about how to de-escalate situations that might get a little bit heated, like, you know, how dare you ask me for my ID? Or even in restaurants, how to approach a customer who might be over-served. I find the, that that's my most current best practices is to recommend the in-person. Now with COVID, it's all changed. We do what we can with the online training, but yes, we offer them, recommend. And as well as trends. So a couple of months ago, maybe about six or eight months ago, we were seeing a lot of fake IDs from Maine. And I notified all of those vendors.
Yeah.
Should kind of set off a red flag for everybody right now.
Yeah. Okay. So training is the bottom line, basically, is what you're saying. Okay. Thank you.
Amy, can you flip to the next page of your presentation where you show the violations?
For?
The second, I think it was the
Backwards?
Oh. Right here. So when you say server compliance and violations, what is specifically the violation?
Either the server that was on duty at the time did not have any training or their training card was expired. They're good for three years. One of the ways that I think that we go above and beyond is I actually notify based on the documents they, they give to you during, during relicensing. I give them a heads up when it is, is about to expire.
So the thing is that you have some repeat that didn't, they, they still didn't have people that were trained. And I'm fairly certain we have a policy, a board policy, I could, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, where we, we require them as part of our vote to approve, we require them to have their employee's tips trained. So if they're not following the policy, then we should probably be calling them in to, you know, I, I mean, even as a warning, call them.
Certainly moving forward.
Right, right. Especially because you did this by visiting them. So you already were alerting them, you know, you're not in compliance and you have to comply. That they had a good period of time between quarter one and quarter three, but you still have three establishments that are back on here. So.
They were not the same employees though.
Well, that's still the same issue.
I agree, but I just want to clarify that. They were different employees.
Yeah, yeah. So, but any employee that's serving has, or selling, serving or selling is required to be TIPS trained. So, or, you know, come, serve a compliance train. So is there another training that you'd be offering anytime soon? Or did you run out of money for that?
I ran out of the Winchester Hospital grant. I, I think I would like to offer this again. I know you have licensing coming up. Now might be a good time to do that, actually. Let me have a look at the budget. Again, we had 68 people take it on, so it cost just over two grand. I think that's something, a cost that I can absorb right now.
Well, if, if it's by grant though, but it's a business expense, so the business should be paying for it, not you for them, right?
It is, but we're trying to remove any
Some funding for it. I think that that's wonderful that you did that for them and that they took advantage of that. But it's something that they're required to do anyway. That was kind of a gift that you were able to do that, secure funds to do that for at least those 16 individuals. So maybe in terms of, if, if, I know we are not voting on anything, but that maybe what we can do, because we're now in the renewal process timeframe and now is the time to kind of basically hammer home the issue here. Maybe we can include something in the, you know, annual renewal process. You know, maybe we can think about this for our next meeting, which is, is that in, well, no, it won't be before renewal process. But renewal applications are due by the end of November. So maybe we can basically make sure that these establishments are in compliance or at least know what our policies are. And then add those policy recommendations under consideration. We should maybe take that under consideration at our next meeting because Amy didn't just do all this effort for us. She's also making, making three, I think I heard you make three policy recommendations.
Yes.
We should maybe consider those. All right.
Also, I know that there's a spreadsheet that's been set up to share information related to violations. So I'll be adding comments in that as well for your review during licensing.
Well, thank you for your, thank you for your work on this. The next, we have, the next item is yours too, right?
Yeah.
Let me just get back to the agenda here.
Sure. If you can, we're, we just hit the end of year four of our five-year Drug Free Communities Grant. So I'm going to provide a very quick snapshot on that. Just a little reminder about what DFC funds, the federal DFC can fund activities to grow the capacity of the coalition. And I know we have two volunteers, I think I saw Rita and Rita Mullin and MRC Bailey on tonight, who are very active members of CIT in general, but volunteers as well. 100% of my salary and benefits are, come out of the grant as well as activities to reduce youth use of alcohol, tobacco, vaping, marijuana and prescription drugs. And I'll just add for your own information that tobacco and vaping federally is still lumped in the same category, but in North Reading, we separate it out. So we actually tackle five specific substances. Everything we do has to fall within the seven strategies for community change. It's all science-based. It's not guesswork. And we believe local problems warrant local solutions. And so in addition to the seven strategies, we also focus on increasing protective factors and reducing risk factors, as well as building the capacity of parents to build healthy kids. So just a little bit about shutdown. When I had been in with Chief Murphy and the lieutenants for budget hearing, we talked about all of our spring plans we had for providing outreach and education. And I'm sorry to tell you, we had 34 programs between myself and Laura Miranda that had to get canceled. But we did have some other successes. We were able to offer prescription drug take-back bags that I hand-delivered to people who are not able or willing to come out of their homes during COVID. This allowed them to safely dispose of prescription drugs in the home in an environmentally safe way as well. We partnered with the Senior Center to Produce Resource Door Hangers. We were able to provide a few unlimited presentations, including nicotine cessation programming to the school staff. So if they ever had students who needed to kick vaping or nicotine, they had proper resources as well as other resources through Laura Miranda. One of our biggest COVID roadblocks though was the collection of data that we do annually. It is required by the federal government that we collect four pieces of data about each of those substances that I mentioned. And I'm sorry to say that although the survey was held, the response was so low. And I'm sorry to say that although the survey was held, the response was so low that it's not statistically valid. So we're not able, you're going to see a gap for 2020 on our data reporting. The feds understand that. It is what it is. It's really unfortunate because this was the year that we had really tackled marijuana vaping and I was anxious to see those numbers. So next year, and I get asked all the time, what do I think the impact of COVID is on youth use? And the truth is, it's just guess at this point. We don't have data and I hate making guesses. So that's been a real setback for me personally in our program. Few accomplishments though. We did grow the coalition 37 volunteers and I can't say enough how important the volunteers are to this project. They're everything. And Chair Marcy Bailey is a wonderful and outstanding leader who's been, I think, chair for three out of the past four years, if I'm not mistaken, and I hope she continues. We did have, hold four public presentations at the school. Those were in partnership with the Public School Parent Association. They're wonderful. They do all the vetting. They find the speakers and we pay for them. Basically it's a great partnership. Detective Lucci and I were able to get into the classroom to do some eighth grade blood alcohol content and brain development classes. But unfortunately COVID hit and we weren't able to get the second semester health kids. So again, that's a gap for us. Laura Miranda and I became trainers in the 40 developmental assets. We had launched that campaign hoping that we were going to start a campaign to become an asset-rich North Reading. COVID got in the way, but we were able to onboard about 70 public school teachers and hopefully we'll re-kick that off in the spring. Ben Ford took over the youth action team during the summer, which is a big help. Those were the kids that did the sticker shock and the shoulder taps that I had mentioned. They also ran a program called the Breezy Bike Bustle to encourage mental health and outdoor health as well as created their own COVID infographic. So they've been, they've been a lot of fun to work with. We also are able to assist with local vape and tobacco regulate regulations. If you remember, Representative Jones appointed me to the State Vape Commission and although we had had several meetings that got halted, but we're able to provide support for various house bills that modernized tobacco. So basically raising fines and taxing vape products comparable to tobacco as well as ban menthol and mint. So I'm happy to do that. But for me, my favorite thing to do is policy writing and advocacy. And just as a reminder, every February I'm able to go to Washington DC and meet with Congressman Moulton, Senator Warren and Senator Markey on this topic. And I am super happy to tell you that this, this issue of youth prevention has bipartisan support. So although they send us and the frontline workers in to advocate for continued funding, it really isn't necessary. We have wonderful bipartisan support for youth prevention. And oftentimes we get asked instead about that, what we do is how does North Reading incorporate mental health treatment and prevention and enforcement all within a It is something that this town should be very proud of. It's, we've been working in this model of having social services built into the North Reading Police Department for several years now. And we have evidence that it works. Specifically it shortens response times, getting people resources. And it also facilitates communication. You know, when you have me doing prevention, Laura doing resources and treatment and the officers doing enforcement in the same house, it just makes sense. And so oftentimes when I go to Washington, they're asking me questions about that model. And I think it's something to be really proud of here, that this is not just something new for us. This is something we've been doing for a while. So what's next? As of October 1st, we started our last year of DFC funding and I can't believe how fast that went. It ends September 30th, 2021. So several months ago, Chair Marcy Bailey began looking at our sustainability plans. And really we have three options. The first is to apply for another five years of DFC funding. The second option would be to adopt part of our budget in, as the town budget. And the third option would be to rely completely on volunteers. Of course, option one is our goal. And so during COVID, the majority of my time has been spent researching and writing. Although scored really high on the last grant, that doesn't mean we're going to do well on the next one because it's competitive. So a couple of challenges I want to highlight that if we apply, well, when we apply for the next round of funding, it does require a match. This has been a requirement the entire time, but it's always been a one-to-one match. Starting in year seven, actually, it's going to be 125% match. And then I believe it goes up to 150% match. That's not really a challenge for us because of how much of the North Reading Police Department resources we can include as part of that match. So I'm not that worried about that one. But one of our challenges is operating it as a new system. We just got moved for, from the National Institute of Health over to the CDC. So I'm having to learn all new systems, including grant submission and reporting systems. These are not easy systems to learn. They've never been easy systems. And I think I'm on my fifth project manager now in five years. Continues to be a challenge. We have been promised better communication and better support. Fingers crossed because that has really been a struggle for five years. Guaranteed funding. So although I mentioned this has bipartisan support, as you know, CDC right now is not very popular. And so because the funding comes through CDC, there is a chance that our, our grant could be cut in any of the years. It goes year to year for appropriations. And the last thing is, it is competitive. And so I want to explain to you how the grants are awarded. You're scored on a score of one to 100. And what they do is they take the pool of money and they fund everybody who got 100, then 99, the 98, and they keep going until the money runs out. I believe when we got our last award, we scored a 93. We scored lowest in data collection. So that's what I've been spending the majority of my time on. It's strengthening our application in the data collection area. Excuse me. And just a little bit about the projected timeline. Now this is if everything is normal. And of course, everything is not normal right now. In fact, they have added three separate waves of DFC funding. It's absolutely crazy, but I'm projecting that it'll be released in January. It'll be due in March. We'll find out midsummer if we got it. And it'll begin either October 1st or October, I've heard rumors of October 31st. And lastly, I just want to give a plug because we are being recorded for our P3 anonymous tips. That is funded, 100% funded by the DFC grant. And we've received over 100 tips. Some related to COVID, some related to drug dealing, it's online cyberbullying and across the gambit of things. But this is a public app that everybody can use. It is 100% anonymous. You can download it onto your smartphone. If you search P3, make sure that you download the blue version, not the green version, the blue version. You can remember it as police. Select it, set it one time for North Reading, your own personal code, and it allows you to communicate directly with detectives. Including uploading photo and video, which is great for somebody like me that cannot remember business plate. Lastly, I always look for an opportunity to tell people that we have Laura Miranda. She is our full-time mental health and substance abuse clinician. She can be reached by phone or email or through detective, excuse me, any of the police officers for information. And I always want to put that out there. And that is it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. So is there, are there any questions? Any, any other members have any questions? Mr. O'Leary? All set? Mistress Tudo?
Yep, I have a question. And Amy, I know you touched on this a little bit, like, you know, the million dollar question is, how was COVID affecting students and whether or not that is leading to more substance abuse, especially in the, you know, more high school. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying anybody, but you know, where you would typically see it. So the thing is, is there any way to, and I don't know if the school could, you know, if the school district and committee is already doing this. I mean, I, I, I don't know. I haven't been in the last couple of meetings there that they have just to even listen in, but is there something we can do or where we start tracking if the, unfortunately, we, we have to do the things a certain way, the safe way. And it looks like the hybrid model is going to be here to stay for a while. So is there any way to track if that lack of, you know, the social part, which is so big for kids of all ages in general? I mean, have you guys thought about any strategy of actually trying to get some data on it? So because I feel like a lot of the time it's, well, we gotta get the kids back in school because well, we, they want to see their friends and play together. But I feel like, I think a lot of people have this idea that there may be more to it. And I wonder if you can get us some data on that if possible.
That is going to be a million dollar grant. Somebody's going to write to study it, to be honest with you. And what I've learned, so my training partners are across the United States. So the training partners I'm closest with are in Missouri. We're very good friends, as well as a tribal nation in Idaho and Fort Bragg in California. And I've learned that it is regional. And so where there's some school of thought of with reduced access, so those rural communities, for example, they can't go anywhere, they have seen a drop. But for us, what we're not able to really get a, a good grasp on is, is that affecting North Reading specifically or even the Northeast region? I think that we are looking to become part of a collaboration in northeastern Massachusetts to look at that. But currently we have a plan in April to do our data collection. I keep waiting till April, but we really have no way of knowing that. But one trend that I have seen emerge is the increase of access via older siblings. That's anecdotal. I'll be honest with you, but we get a lot of that P3 tips that I mentioned, we get tips that way. Where their older siblings are, are providing substances, if not for self-use, but to sell as well on social media. The parents are involved in that as well.
Okay. Or so, all right. Yeah, that makes sense. So it's almost like, okay. Yeah. And again, I ask more because I feel like that's a, I mean, the outlet, the outlet for, I don't know, I don't want to call it antisocial behavior, but I feel like when you look at, you know, when you just look at some of the symptoms of kids that are really antisocial at no fault of their own, it seems like the path to substance abuse, it becomes a lot wider.
Yeah. And you know, one of the things I think plays a role here, if this had been 30 years ago, we'd have a different answer. Because what we know is when kids don't communicate about substances, you know, peer pressure and peer information of sharing is, is a very real thing. That is not a factor now because of social media. So we've had parents who say like, I don't think my kid's finding out about vaping now. I, I guarantee you they have. It's on all of the platforms.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot more powerful than, you know, Marlboro billboards, you know, in the eighties. So, okay. Well, thank you. You know, you answered the question. I was just, I figured there was something going on. It just that it's always, instead of asking someone who has no idea, I'd ask somebody who actually gave me an answer that makes sense, not just something you know, read on a thread.
For North Reading participating in that study, if we get the opportunity.
Mrs. Gonzalez, questions, comments?
No, Amy was very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walner?
I'm good. Thank you very much, Amy.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Very informative.
Thank you. And I'll, I believe I'll see you again for the hearing on the other violations as well down the road.
Okay. That sounds good. Keep up the great work for our town.
Thank you for the support and really thank you to all the volunteers that work on this. They're amazing.
Yes, thank you. All right. Our next order of business is the second reading of the bi-recycle policy. And this is why I think Mr. Greenberg has been hanging, was hanging on, waiting and still with us. Still awake. All right. So we have this in our packet at page, Mr. Gilberto, do you know what page it is?
Page 30.
Thank you. I'm all the way to 42. So, okay. And when last we met, we did our first reading. And were there any specific changes made based on our first discussion, Mr. Gilberto?
No, Madam Chair, I did review the, the minutes and the video from our discussion and, you know, I heard some very good feedback regarding the commitment to the policy, but it did not appear to me that there was any further changes that were required. I think the document before you reflects our intention and our capabilities while also incorporating what is acceptable to the policymakers at the state level. So I want to thank Mr. Greenberg for his work to sort of get us right to that spot where I think we're able to proceed with this.
Mr. Greenberg, any input? You're, you're here. You might as well, you might as well speak on it.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your patience.
My job was easy to just sit. You guys, I keep getting blown away by how patient and thorough you people are. And just on behalf of the town, again, I wanted to thank all of you for your hard work. I'll be very brief because I, I don't think it needs much discussion. This is a good idea. It's a good policy, but my motivation for bringing it before the board is that it's a necessary requirement for applying for an IQ grant from DEP that will allow us to educate our residents as to what should go into our recycling bids and what shouldn't. Very important issue, as I've mentioned before, JRM's contract comes up for renewal next June. This is going to have our ability to clean up our recycling stream, which desperately needs it, will dramatically affect financial matters having to do with that contract. So I very much appreciate the board considering it.
Thank you. Any discussion? And Mr. Gilberto, do we need to actually read it for the second reading?
The board has not customarily done so and I give you particular credit for having read it the first time. Though, you know, I think that the, I don't think it needs to be read again, especially where it's unchanged.
Mr. O'Leary? Your thoughts? You're on mute.
More people appreciate that than, you know, than I am on mute. No, Dan, you and your group, thank you again for your reference, bringing this to our attention. I think it's, this is an easy step that we should be taking and look forward to, to endorsing it. And you're right, the public education on recycling just needs to be stepped up a bit. That's certainly going to impact the contracts going forward. So let's go for it.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'm so thrilled to see this happening. And I can't say enough about education, education, education. I mean, even myself, I'm learning. I just learned that you're not supposed to take the caps off of the water bottles, which I've always done, just thinking that that was a good thing. And it's not because the caps can get caught up. So, you know, there's just all these little things that we need to know and learn. So I'm thrilled with this.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Studo? Anything? You're all set? Mr. Walner, anything?
I didn't know about the caps either.
Right?
So keep the education coming because I'd like to be compliant, you know? And I, and I take responsibility for training my household. So there you go.
All right. So do we have a motion? I think, oh, Mr. Gilberto?
I know he's hiding behind the screen being shut off, but Mr. Deming has also been very active in conversations with Mrs. Gonzalez, Mr. Greenberg and I. You know, not just for this, but for some other issues we're trying to figure out for trash and recycling collection as well. So we do want to recognize him. Thanks, Chris.
Absolutely.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Deming, for your work on this. So are we good to adopt? We think, I think we might have a motion in there.
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to hold the second reading of the bi-recycle policy into adopt the policy.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye. That's it. Thank you and good night. All right. Our next order of business is to re, is review and approve calendar year 2021 Medicare health insurance plans. Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, this is, I think, a pretty straightforward one. We've got a renewal for our Blue Cross Blue Shield and Tufts Medicare Plans, which is mostly for, for retirees. Different than the active employee plans, these plans run on a calendar year basis. So we are generally before you this time of year. Sometimes we've been here having to have difficult conversations relating Sometimes we've been here having to have difficult conversations relative to the plan design in order to try to get the premium down to a manageable level. Fortunately, this is not one of those years. Um, the renewal rate for the Blue Cross Plan was a zero point six percent increase, and the renewal rate for the Tufts Plan was a four point zero one percent increase. Both are within our projections for, um, the, um, budget during the current fiscal year, and we are recommending the board vote to approve the rates. We did review this with the Insurance Advisory Committee, um, and the, um, retiree representative was, uh, taking attendance at that meeting last Thursday, so they are aware that this is, um, what's pending.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Studo?
Let's have a quick question. So do we, and I just, um, for, for current employees and retirees, it's, um, the town pays the hundred percent of the cost of the premium? Or is there a sharing? I, I, I don't know. I've never, I've always been private sector, so I don't know.
So the, the share is a fifty percent, fifty percent split for our Medicare Plans, which is the ones that you're voting on right here. That is the, I believe, the maximum allowed, um, under state law in terms of the ability for us to pay the, uh, the town share. Um, the, um, the active employees, it's a seventy percent share paid by the town and a thirty percent share paid by the employee. That is not part of this group, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I guess. Madam Chair, I move to approve the calendar year 2021 Medicare Health Insurance Plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye. Next order of business is the, up, I'm sorry, hold on a second. Approval, approved fiscal year 2021 health insurance premium credit.
Madam Chair, through you, there is a, a mistake in the way that's presented. There, there is no vote that's required by the, the board on this. What has happened is because of, um, lower than anticipated costs and utilization, Blue Cross Blue Shield has been issuing, um, a, a credit to its, uh, plan subscribers, including us, the town of North Reading. That credit amounted to ninety-one thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents and will be applied, um, at a bill, um, either this month or next month. There was a share of that, that is the town's, um, roughly seventy percent of it, just using the round numbers of the way our plans paid for, and roughly thirty percent is a share that goes, uh, to our employees, has been paid by our employees. So we will be working to credit our employees most likely, um, on a payroll in December with, uh, what's known as a, basically a premium reduction, where the credit will be applied against what they normally expect to pay for, a deduction out of payroll. Um, and in terms of the town's share, that will result in some funds unexpended, uh, out of the fiscal year 2021 health insurance budget, uh, in similar fashion to how the PFA operates, where what's been accrued but not spent is left over at the end of the year. Um, so some more good news on health insurance. Um, I, I'm a little concerned that it may be the last of the good news on health insurance as we look towards the renewal next year, but, uh, it is good news, and good news not just for the town, but for its employees as well.
Okay, thank you.
There is no vote that's required.
All right, any questions? Seeing none, we are going to review, next order of business is to review the list of committee appointments to be advertised, and it's pretty numerous. These are for, these are vacancies on committees for the town, while our, which we are all volunteers, and that will be, um, after completion of the citizen activity form, which is on the town's website, www.northreadingmass.gov, or contacting the town administrator's office for a paper application, um, nine seven eight six six four six oh one oh. And the forms must be submitted no later than Monday, November twenty-third, 2020 at four PM. Mr. Gilberto, will this, these, there are multiple boards listed in your, in the packet, the Board of Appeals, the Commission on Disabilities, the Conservation Commission, the Cultural Council, Economic Development Committee, Forest Committee, Hillview Commission, Historic Just Youth, looks like you listed every single one of our boards and commissions. Are those going to be advertised just generally?
They will be advertised on the town website, in the North Reading transcript, and then publicized via our, uh, social media platform on Facebook as well. And, um, these are not only the appointments of the select board, but the appointments of the town administrator as well. Um, the practice has been to advertise any position which is coming up, um, as a appointment or reappointment. So you'll see all of them are there. There may not, there, there may be candidates for reappointment who apply for these, um, and there often are candidates for reappointment who apply for these positions. Um, but, uh, this is the list, and it, and I've, uh, already told Mrs., uh, Ms. Arti to expect that we'll be submitting it to her tomorrow. Um, you know, so this was just intended to highlight that we'll be advertising it to let the community know that there is a deadline upcoming for appointments that are traditionally made in December. Uh, there's a secondary component of this, which I know we've had some previous discussion about, which is, uh, assessing the work of the committee and making any determination that there needs to be any, um, you know, change or, or other issue. So this would be the opportunity to discuss that. Um, I will tell you, I'm not aware of any such concerns. Um, none of the board members have expressed anything to me individually, but I did, you know, before we advertised this, wanted to make sure I provide that opportunity for the board members.
Mr. Gilberto, on the list of these committees, which is just every committee that we have, are any of those, do, do you have an idea of how many vacancies need to be filled on each of those?
Um, so, I, I do have access to the information. I don't, I don't have it off, off the top of my head. Um, I, I would be reading it from the board and Commission Information Center that the town clerk maintains. Um, this is not all of the committees. These are only the ones for which, uh, uh, there's either a vacancy or a current term that is expiring.
Oh, so the list in the packet, it looks like there's...
It's most of them. It just may not be all of them.
Yeah, it may not be the ones that, because some of these don't have vacancies on them right now.
No, they have candidates whose terms are expiring, though.
Okay, so you're just going to re-advertise in blanket fashion for, so, but I, I think that you would be, um, we also keep citizen activity forms on for a year, right? So how are you going to address the citizen activity forms that were already filed by people interested in these different boards and commissions?
So they are forwarded to the liaisons and to the board for consideration when appointments are made, if somebody's applied within the last, I believe it's three years.
So you'll be going back and looking at, you know, anybody that's expressed an interest on the various committee?
That's correct.
As a vacancy, okay, great. All right, does anyone have any questions?
I guess, do we get a list of who has applied for particular committees?
You do, as they, you generally, as they come in, uh, Mr. Walner, we will forward you as a liaison, um, the citizen activity form for a candidate who is interested in reappointment. And then my, my understanding is that the members normally will, the liaison for the particular committee will have a conversation with, um, the candidate, um, any candidate for reappointment who applies, as well as, um, the chair of the, uh, the committee or commission. Um, at least that's my understanding of how board members have traditionally handled it.
All right, and I'll, I'll, I'll email, I'll, the email, because on the form, it's usually has an email contact on there, so, um, did you have any other questions, Mr. Walner?
Well, I guess I'm just asking is, I mean, is, was I supposed to have been collecting them throughout the year? Or do you?
No, uh, yeah, the short answer is no, you don't, you don't need to, um, as, if, if they, uh, if they come in here, we would be, we may be holding them to provide to you, um, so that you see them along with anything that comes in after we advertise it. We also have some that have been, uh, on file for up to three years that we'll also provide you. Um, and that's all work that will happen over, uh, roughly the next six to eight weeks, leading up to, uh, appointment or reappointments, um, in the, one of the two meetings in December.
So can we get a, a timeline of this type of stuff so we can be prepared?
Sure, so the timeline is in the, uh, the ad. Um, it'll get posted on Thursday. The, uh, applications are due at the end of, uh, I believe November twenty-third was the date that I saw on there. Um, and as they're coming in, we'll be forwarding them to you. You'll have the opportunity to discuss with the candidates. And Ms. Brooks has also texted me that you'll also be getting separately a, a note of the expiring term, so your committees as well. So you'll know what's coming up.
Okay.
Across your membership. But what we try to do is when we get an application in, we'll try to get it to the liaison so that you're not getting a bunch of information dumped on you on November twenty-third to then have to follow up on. Um, but one thing that you could certainly consider doing in the background is, you know, to the extent you're able to have conversations with the chairs of the committees to which your liaison, um, that's something I would encourage the board members to do, um, if they have any questions or concerns about the board or, or about an interested candidate for either appointment or reappointment.
Any other questions, Mr. Walner?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, just hoping it goes a little smoother this year than it did last year. Well, um, a lot of confusion last year, so hoping it goes smoother. Good luck, Mr. Vincenzo.
Yeah, I, I'll just jump back in. I had promised to review the procedures, which is right behind me by two weeks, so that's still on my docket, and I'll plan to look at that now, now that we're coming up to, because we should be treating our volunteers like precious assets, you know? We're so lucky to have them on our, serve on our boards. We gotta, you know, we gotta treat them with utmost respect and care and can't let a procedure get in the way of making that happen. So I think that's what we, you know, in one occasion, at least we fell apart on that, from my point of view.
Okay, um, any other questions? Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I, I think it's important that, uh, all the members of the board are on the same page in relation to how we're going to, uh, proceed, because last year was an embarrassment, quite frankly. You know, i- it should be clear that the liaisons are responsible with communicating with the chairs of the respective liaison committees, uh, consult with them in relation to, you know, how we're going to interview the applicants, whether it be jointly, singly, severally, how are we going to do it? And then, um, it needs to be clearly articulated to the board what the liaison's recommendation is and what the chair's recommendation is, uh, because that wasn't what occurred, uh, last year, and it created a lot of confusion, a lot of heartburn, and it was totally unnecessary and avoidable. So I, I think collectively here, we should agree as to how this is going to proceed. If we need to memorialize it in the, you know, in our, in our policy document, and again, recognizing that policies are sometimes ignored, um, at least it should be memorialized here, we're all on the same page. So the, you know, as a liaison is going to be making a recommendation, liaison is also going to inform the board, you know, what the chair's recommendation was, if the chair can't be present, you know, with what, I mean, our policy right now says that appointments at a board meeting with committee chairpersons and nominees, this, this is, you know, the nominees have to be here, the chairs have to be here, and, you know, to me, that's a little bit overly cumbersome at times, particularly when we limit another number of applicants that we have, so it isn't really necessary. But it is important for all of us to understand what the needs of each committee, board committee and commission is, and what the chairperson of that board committee and commission is recommending to us as a board, as well as the liaison. Again, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's going to be in concert. So my practice has been to convey what my recommendation is and the board chair's recommendation, and I would ask the same courtesy be afforded by every, every other member of the board too.
Mr. Studo, any questions? Do you have any questions?
No, I got to review film.
All set, so those will be advertised, um, getting back to the topic on the agenda, those will be advertised in the paper as well?
Correct.
And when will that go out, do you think, Mr. Gilberto, with the deadline?
It'll go to the paper on, uh, tomorrow morning, and it will be advertised in Thursday's edition of the newspaper, from my understanding. And it will also this week, uh, go up on the town website and on social media. The board has a policy that will not make any appointments, um, for, um, without having a thirty-day notice, uh, period, um, which we're complying with by doing this. And, uh, we generally begin making, um, you know, uh, putting on the agenda the appointments or reappointments in the first meeting in December.
Right, and thank you to Jane, too, because she's pretty on top of making sure we're on top of getting that squared away. Um, and she gives us, you know, she's, I think she starts out at the beginning of December, reminding us, you know, we have a couple of weeks to get this squared away, to reach out to the prospective attendees, and reminding us all that this is the appointing authority. So the ultimate decision comes down to the majority of the board on a, a liaison appointment, so. Um, so we'll look forward to seeing that, and hopefully look forward to seeing plenty of new volunteers, new faces, new volunteers this round. The, um, next order of business is the approved legal bills. Mr. Studo?
Yes.
We have at least one or two motions on that.
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for August 2020 in the amount of thirteen thousand, six forty-six, oh, one as follows, ninety-one, ooh, read this phone, ninety-one oh two fifty-one, forty-two twelve for labor, and three thirty-one fifty for Elm Street, for a total of thirteen six forty-six oh one.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye. Was it just one motion, Mr. Studo? Did you have a second one? That's it. Our next order of business is minutes, September twenty-first, 2020 regular and executive session, October third, 2020 regular session, which was our town meeting, our meeting before the town meeting meeting.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve the September twenty-first, 2020 regular session meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the September twenty-first, 2020 executive session meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, seconded by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye.
And Madam Chair, I move to approve the October third, 2020 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Well, I, just discussion, it really didn't indicate how well and how smoothly the town meeting. Other than that, I...
Yeah, all right, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Studo.
I abstained, I wasn't, I don't...
Oh, that's right. Yeah, we're going to record you as abstaining, Mr. Walner.
Uh, aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye, yes, and thank you to everybody, public facilities, everybody that took part, all the volunteers, superintendent and all the school personnel, all the, all the extra department heads that were there to help us make that one happen, too. All right, the next order...
I didn't mean to be critical of whoever was taking the notes for the minutes, but Mr. Town Administrator, he did a fine job.
It didn't live up to Jane's standards, but my best.
Uh, all right, our next order of business is the town administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of things I'd like to note this evening. The first is that there, there will be a, um, uh, drug and vape takeback day on Saturday, October twenty-fourth, from ten AM to two PM at the senior center in the front parking lot, and this is an opportunity for folks to dispose of things that might be in their medicine cabinet or otherwise, um, safely so that it doesn't get into the improper hands. Um, it's going to be run in a drive-up fashion, um, at the senior center, again, this Saturday from ten AM to two PM, and we do have information about it up on the town's website, as well as on our social media page. Um, and then secondly, uh, I just want to give an update relative to some, uh, important public works, collection and recycling information. I know that there's a number of these things that we've normally done that got delayed, but I do want to recognize the DPW, including, uh, Mr. Deming, um, Ms. Dechar and Jenny in the office as well for their efforts, uh, to pull this together here. Um, so I'm just going to take it in order, and this information is up on the town website, but there will be a rigid plastic dumpster located at the DPW facility on Halloween Saturday, October thirty-first, from eight AM to four PM. So, uh, anybody with rigid plastic items, so sort of the, you know, old trash bag... So, anybody with rigid plastic items, so sort of the, you know, old trash barrels, the things that are hard plastic that are not suitable for recycling at the curbside collection, but are suitable for recycling in general, folks can bring those down to the DPW on Saturday, October 31st. There will be a curbside collection of scrap metal on Saturday, November 7th, you should have items curbside by 6:30 a.m. Please note, no appliances, chain link fence, or propane tanks. And for those who don't know, we do have a scrap dumpster still at the DPW yard, which items can be deposited in pretty much at any point in time. Curbside collection of yard waste, important for those who are looking to dispose of grass clippings, small branches and leaves, Saturday, November 21st, and Saturday, December 5th. Waste must be curbside by 6:30 a.m., and the, the only bags that may be used for that are plast, excuse me, paper bags, not plastic bags, paper bags only. No barrels, branches must be less, no greater than three inches in diameter, and cut to lengths of no more than three feet, and they must be bundled and tied, but not bagged. The compost center, again, a very busy season coming up on us here, it is open Saturdays until, from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., and then beginning Sunday, November 1st, it will be open Sundays in November from noon to 4:00 p.m. for disposal of leaves, leaves or brush or grass clippings. And then finally, something that does not get a whole lot of attention, but we hope that the community is aware of, is that residents may drop off oil waste at the DPW garage the last Saturday of every month from April to November, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. and noon at the garage. So, thank you for the folks at DPW for putting that together and getting that out. Finally, it's not in here, but I know that's late breaking, we, we do believe we're going to be able to pull off a household hazardous waste day this fall on November 14th at the DPW garage, so we just ask folks to keep an eye out for information on that. I know that's something we were really hoping we could pull off, and I think we're going to be able to do it, so I just, again, want to recognize Chris and the staff for trying to get that done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gilberto, any questions? All set, we can move on to all the new business. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Studo, you're a broken record, vote, you know, get out there, participate, I don't care what side of the fence you're on, or what your persuasion is, you know, this is our opportunity to be heard, the impact is going to be significant. Let's get our frustration levels down and get things resolved and solved, and let's move forward, so, vote by mail, early vote, a vote on Election Day, but please participate. Thank, that's it.
Yes, you're here, all right, Mr. Studo.
Nothing.
I can't believe you're still awake. Mr. Walner.
I'm good, thank you very much.
All right, Mrs. Gonzalez.
All set.
And just congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Studo, which we started out with, so, and we have a motion to adjourn.
I have second shift after we adjourn.
Oh, it's a good thing we kept you awake, then.
Oh, that's fine, motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion to adjourn, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mrs. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye. Good night, folks.
All right, good night.
Bye, Rita.